Employment program will be, will contribute to creditable service for purposes of retirement, for their participation, these individuals have, would become employees of the District of Columbia. Bill 26182, the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025 was introduced in March of 2025 by council members Lewis George, Pinto, Henderson, Allen White, Parker, and Nadeau. And it would provide that an individual may be eligible for benefits if they are unemployed and not receiving unemployment insurance benefits if they were an employee covered by the Universal Paid Leave Act during some or all of the year preceding a qualifying event that will avail them a paid leave. And finally, Bill 26185, the Fair Housing Opportunities for Public Employment Amendment Act, or the bill is referred to as HOPE, would establish a hiring practice for graduates of qualifying transitional employment programs and clarify the process by which an applicant's criminal history is considered when applying for employment with the district government. I look forward to hearing from all of our public and government witnesses regarding these important pieces of legislation. And I'm asking everyone to endeavor to keep your remarks to five minutes so that we will get through this process in a timely fashion. With that being said, I want to note that the entire written testimony that will be provided to the committee will be a part of the record. So if you have not submitted it, please email it to ceal@dc council.gov, and that's C-E-A-L at D C council dot gov. The hearing record will remain open until Wednesday, the 28th of May at 5:30 PM. At this time, I want to turn and recognize one of my colleagues and any others that may be online to see if they would like to make an opening statement. I turn to at-large council member Kenyon McDuffie.
Thank you, Chairperson Bonds. I really appreciate you holding this hearing today. I am all over the city today in terms of meetings, but I did not want to miss the opportunity to provide some brief comments as to why I introduced the Marionberry Summer Youth Employment Program Credible Service Benefit Amendment Act of 2025. As many people know, the Marionberry Summer Youth Employment Program has been a staple for youth of the District of Columbia since its inception and has opened chances to insurances, careers, and economic opportunities for so many. It also did so for me. I'm an alumnus of the program and have found my time there to be instrumental in creating my desire to pursue a career in public service. The program still presents this great opportunity for youth of the District of Columbia, and many of the alumni have gone on to serve in the District of Columbia government as I have. This time in the program is service to the district and its citizens, and it should be treated as such. Hence, the intention of this bill, I've spent the time speaking with many of my fellow alumni, speaking about how our time in the SYEP is service to the district and to the district itself should treat it as such. The bill amends the original Youth Employment Act to define time in MBSYEP as credible hours towards vesting, towards your retirement as a district employee. This accomplishes two things I wanted to achieve in this bill. It helps those who have participated in the program put their true time served towards the district of retirement. It also helps encourage our children in the district to begin thinking of their future careers and to see the District of Columbia as a potential career path. When you're in high school, you're far from thinking about retirement. But by including this provision in the program, it encourages the participants to begin thinking about financial decisions that they can start planning for as a young adult. As the Chair of the Committee on Business and Economic Development, I'm always looking for ways to encourage our city's economic development and engage with its young people, having them think about the bountiful economic opportunities available in our city and connecting them to it. So again, I want to thank you, Chairperson Bonds, for holding this hearing today. I look forward to hearing from the witnesses. I won't be able to stay, but I do have staff who are going to monitor the hearing, so I really appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your, your opening statement. Recognizing that we have not been joined by any other member of the council at this time, we will move immediately to our list of panelists from our public witnesses. And we'll start with Representative Oier, I believe he's number one, Robert Brennan, James Harnett, Katie McConville. All right. Thank you for being here. Zach Rigone. All right, we do have a few. Which one? Okay, all right. All right, we'll begin with Mr. Harnett. Thank you for being here. You've got it.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bonds and members of the council for having me today. My name is James Harnett, and I live in Foggy Bottom in Ward Two. I want to lend my strong support for Bill 26136, the Special Election in the Office of Delegate Amendment Act of 2025. A short, four-line bill like this one deserves a short endorsement. This bill would codify a maximum seven-week timeline for holding a special election to fill the seat of a member or delegate to the House of Representatives in the event of a national crisis where a quarter or more of all members of the House are killed or incapacitated. The Government Accountability Office recently profiled all 50 states and territories' status for holding special elections in the House of Representatives when the Speaker declares that more than 100 vacancies exist, and found that only nine states have procedures for following federal law. Conducting elections is complicated. We do a great job of them in the district, but that is only thanks to our thoughtful and clear election code. This requirement may well have gone unnoticed had the GAO not conducted their report, considering how it was quietly passed into law in 2005, potentially leaving the district without essential, albeit too limited, federal representation in a national crisis. I want to thank Chairwoman Bonds' staff for quickly identifying this issue and for Council Member Bonds for, for your introduction to this legislation, and I ask for its quick consideration and adoption.
Thank you very much for your testimony on this, this important bill. We want to be in compliance. Every day, I think we at the council do all that we can to be considered regular amongst the people across our great nation, so thank you. Of course, that leads us to wanting to be a state, and we understand, but we want to make sure that we are as much as possible in compliance with any of the requirements. So thank you very much. And Ms. McConville.
Just to clarify, will I have five minutes as an organizational witness?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Five minutes is, yes, but if you go a little longer, it's usually okay.
I'll keep it to five. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Bonds and council members, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Katie McConville, and I'm a policy counsel for the Council for Court Excellence, a nonpartisan nonprofit organization with the mission to enhance justice in the district. This testimony includes views from our partner organization, Zetec DC, from their perspective providing legal and financial services to returning citizens. My testimony today concerns the Fair Opportunities for Public Employees HOPE Amendment Act of 2025. CCE has a long, has long championed fair employment opportunities for individuals with criminal records, and CCE's Second Chance Hiring Alliance engages employers to recognize the talent within DC's returning citizen population. Similarly, Zetec DC's Returning Citizens Project works with DC residents who have suffered economic harm stemming from interactions with the criminal legal system and sees that reforming job and housing barriers are top priorities. The HOPE Amendment Act could significantly improve DC government hiring of fully qualified individuals with past convictions. However, we believe this legislation can go further to broaden eligibility and reduce employment barriers. First, eligible training programs should be expanded beyond those run by DC agencies. We believe restricting the benefits of this bill to those who complete DC agency job readiness programs is unnecessarily narrow. In 2024, just 130 people completed Project Empowerment's job readiness training. Meanwhile, nearly half, 46% of employable adults under community supervision in DC, were unemployed in 2023. Accordingly, existing DC agency programs can only serve a fraction of those who could benefit from the HOPE Act. Numerous high-quality job readiness programs beyond DC agencies also serve returning citizens, such as Georgetown's Pivot Program and DC Central Kitchen's culinary job training. Some of these programs were even developed in collaboration with or funded by the district. We urge council to amend this bill so returning citizens who complete employment readiness programs outside of DC agencies can also benefit from the Transitional Employment Program graduate employment preference when applying to DC government positions. Second, pending criminal charges should not be included in the criminal history report. Currently, the required criminal history report includes both convictions and pending criminal charges, undermining the principle that individuals are innocent until proven guilty. Job applicants with a pending criminal charge should be treated the same as those without a conviction until a court determination is made, especially as many charges initially brought against people in DC are dismissed and do not result in a criminal conviction. Third, all applicants should be subject to finite look-back periods in the relevant screen process, regardless of offense type. This bill excludes certain offenses, including sex offenses, child abuse, and child cruelty, from the bill's time limits on criminal record relevance. This means, this means that individuals with decades-old convictions may face permanent disqualification regardless of rehabilitation or behavior since their offense. We ask that this legislation be amended to create a finite look-back period for all offenses in the criminal history check process. Fourth, the five-year look-back period for misdemeanors and eight-year look-back period for felonies should be shortened. Maintaining employment is a common condition of probation for people sentenced with both misdemeanors and felonies. Some states have taken steps to ensure misdemeanor convictions don't have an outsized impact on people's chances for success. In California, certain misdemeanor convictions are automatically sealed for those who complete probation, and in Arkansas, misdemeanor convictions are automatic, or can be sealed after successful completion of one sentence. Given this, a look-back period of two years for misdemeanor convictions should provide ample evidence that a person's past misdemeanor offending is just that, in the past. For felonies, research shows that nationally, reoffending rates drop off substantially after three years, with only two, 7.2% of people recidivating within five years of release, regardless of the severity of offense. Given the challenges of reentry that exist, remaining conviction for, for three years combined with the successful completion of an approved training program should be sufficient to demonstrate job readiness. In addition, reducing the look-back periods would be especially, especially beneficial to young adults entering the DC community. Incarceration reduces lifelong earnings between 33 and 43%, and other research shows that just a year-long sentence can reduce cumulative earnings over five years by 13%. Given that half of all incarcerated people are parents, ensuring that the benefits of this legis, that this legislation proposes apply to as many as possible will also help improve the quality of life of district children, their families, and our community. Moreover, to fully support returning citizens, district leadership review job descriptions and experience requirements. Strict criteria around years of experience requirements may exclude capable candidates. Hiring managers should evaluate applicants holistically, considering all relevant skills and life experiences. Additionally, the ability to become employed can be drastically impacted by credit-related issues. While DC's Fair Credit Employment Act restricts credit checks in most hiring, several roles are exempt, such as police officers and employees in the office of the Chief Financial Officer. We hope the district will reassess whether credit checks are necessary for currently exempted jobs. Finally, we encourage council to include a data collection component in this legislation to track how many returning citizens are advancing through the hiring process and ultimately employed by district agencies to help assess this law's impact and guide future improvements. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we'll move to you. Mr. Rigone.
Thank you for having me today. Good morning, Chairpersons Bonds and members of the subcommittee. My name is Zachary Rigoni, and I serve as the Policy Director for the National Reentry Network for Returning Citizens. We are a DC-based nonprofit that works to empower formerly incarcerated residents to achieve successful reintegration by advocating for equitable policies, supporting grassroots reentry efforts, and strengthening community ties. I'm here today to offer testimony on the fair hiring opportunity for public employment, HOPE Amendment Act of 2025. While we support the bill's underlying goals and see it as a step in the right direction, we believe it does not go far enough to address the structural barriers returning citizens face in securing public employment in the district. The HOPE Amendment Act is necessary because the barriers of employment facing returning citizens are both well-documented and deeply entrenched. Nationally, the unemployment rate for people with criminal records is nearly five times higher than that of the general population. In DC, where an estimated 7,000 individuals return home from incarceration each year, these disparities contribute directly to cycles of poverty, housing instability, and recidivism. Employment is consistently one of the strongest predictors of successful reentry. Research shows that having a stable job can reduce the likelihood of recidivism by more than 20%. When returning citizens are given meaningful work opportunities, they are far more likely to remain stable, self-sufficient, engaged members of our community. That is why it's imperative that the district government lead by example and set a clear precedent for the private sector by priorities, prioritizing fair, inclusive, and equitable hiring practices for justice-impacted residents. We want to acknowledge and commend several important provisions within the HOPE Amendment Act. Chief among them is the bill's effort to bring greater objectivity to the hiring process by requiring a relevant screen to ensure that only criminal history is directly related to the job's responsibilities is considered. This represents a necessary shift away from vague or overly punitive hiring standards. That said, we need to expand that to all individuals that are returning citizens, and we need to reduce the amount of the look-back period to make this truly impactful. We also appreciate the bill's commitment to transparency, particularly in its requirement that application, applicants be provided with written examples for denials, guidance on how to appeal, and information about when they may reapply. These procedural protections are critical for building trust in the hiring process. Additionally, while we welcome the inclusion of the annual reporting requirement as a mechanism for potential accountability, it will be incumbent upon this council to provide sustained oversight and to take corrective action if the reporting reveals the bill is falling short of its intended impact. While the HOPE Amendment Act takes important steps, it falls short in one critical area. The hiring preference is limited only to individuals who complete, complete district-run transitional employment programs. In FY24, those programs reach just 308 people. That's less than 5% of the total number of returning citizens released annually. Limiting the scope this narrowly risks making the preference more performative than impactful, something that looks good in a press release, but will offer little practical benefit to most of the people it claims to support. Other groups, such as individuals who have aged out of the foster care system, receive a hiring preference and recognition of systemic barriers they face. Returning citizens deserve a similar consideration. We recommend extending a 10-point hiring preference to all individuals who meet the bill's definition of a returning citizen. If the council believes distinction is needed, a five-point preference could still offer meaningful support while setting a different threshold. At a past Morca employment event, I met a woman who spent years working in the private sector in federal government administrative roles before serving on a drug-related sentence. Since her release, she had applied to numerous DC government jobs in her field, but was never advanced as one of the most qualified, despite her clear experience. A few preference points could have pushed her application into view, giving her a fair chance at a job and the agency a chance to hire it in gem. To close, it's important to recognize the significant benefits to both the government and private sector for hiring returning citizens. According to the Second Chance Business Coalition, 82% of managers report the second-chance employees bring equal or higher value to their organizations compared to those without records. Moreover, employers who promote second-chance hiring see lower turnover rates. Beyond the individual employer, excluding people with criminal records from the workforce costs the U.S. economy between $78 billion and $87 billion annually in lost output. With DC's higher-than-average incarceration rate, investing in this underutilized population could provide a powerful economic opportunity for the district and the region. While the HOPE Amendment is a solid first step in advancing employment opportunities for returning citizens, it must go further to be truly impactful. By expanding the hiring preference to all returning citizens, not just those who complete transitional programs, the district can better tap into a workforce that offers both social and economic benefits. Hiring returning citizens not only reduces recidivism, but also strengthens our communities and the economy. We urge the council to amend the bill to ensure it provides meaningful opportunities, make this district safer, and more prosperous for all. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thanks to the entire panel, I would like to just pose a few questions, particularly to, to you as it relates to your statement. As you know, the bill requires the Department of Human Resources to identify programs that provide hiring preference points. What does that really mean when we talk about that? How do you see that being implemented and by our government?
So I looked into this a little bit prior to drafting my testimony, and also as someone who has been applying to DC government jobs to understand the process. And how it works in the DC government is the application process, when someone applies, they get scored over multiple different questions that they answer throughout. What the hiring preference does is provides an additional bit of points onto that score that helps to potentially push that person up the list to be viewed. It does not necessarily assure that they will be selected for any kind of position, but what it does is provide a little bit of an extra buffer to, to individuals that might be facing a tougher time in securing the past experience or having a full understanding of how to answer some of these directly automated scoring systems to allow their points to be higher up and get visibility to the hiring managers that will ultimately pick from a selected group to do an interview. So it wouldn't necessarily guarantee jobs, but what it does do is give them a better chance of getting their foot in the door to the interview process to hopefully be looked at and then taken into consideration.
Also, I think you and Ms. McConville indicated an interest in the applicants being subject to finite look-back periods. If you would speak to that, give me a little more understanding of how you see the implementation of this bill working. Okay.
Sure. So we would like all, all offenses prior convictions to have finite look-back periods so that there's no chance essentially of someone indefinitely being penalized for a past crime. If you look at my record testimony, we give several examples of, you know, different states and statutes that have shorter look-back periods for misdemeanors, felonies, and this other class that's made in this bill of sex offenses, child abuse, and child cruelty crimes. For example, even the National Sex Offender Registry Act allows certain individuals who either committed crimes as youth or who have shown over a decade of rehabilitation to be removed from that registry list. So we are urging council to include finite, a finite look-back period for that specific population, and then also to shorten the look-back period for both misdemeanors and felony offenses. The misdemeanor look-back period in the bill right now is five years, and the felony look-back period is eight years. And so we recommend that the misdemeanor look-back period be shortened to at least two years, and we cite several states that have shorter look-back periods or automatic record ceilings, so those misdemeanors wouldn't even be considered, whereas DC does not. And the same goes for the felony look-back periods. We urge council to shorten it just a little bit to allow more people to get just a little bit further in the relevant screening process to have their applications considered. That doesn't preclude council from, you know, in their job hiring process from excluding certain crimes or applicants from being considered for those positions. So we believe that public safety would still be protected.
I, I thank you very much. I appreciate you adding that because I was going to follow up and ask, what, how do you see the treatment for those that have been accused and convicted of more than one If you would add to your statement.
Yeah, I think I would look at how, you know, whether those crimes are different, whether there's, you know, the same, and also how long it's been since those crimes were committed. Obviously, if someone, you know, committed a felony decades ago, and then more recently they have a small misdemeanor, that would be different than somebody committing, you know, a certain type of violent crime multiple times in a row and within a recent history. So I would leave that to the time periods and up to the individual discretion of the, I can't remember the term, but the hiring manager at each DC agency.
All right. And Mr. Rigone, you have?
Yes, so, so along that same lines, in terms of both reducing the time span and expanding it to all charges, I, I think when you look at the data and the statistics that come up, it's clear that being able to obtain jobs is one of, if not the largest driver for reducing recidivism and prevent, helping to prevent individuals from returning back to crime. And I feel that when we put greater barriers on the more serious charges and people that had those offenses, we're kind of acting counterproductive to public safety. We're saying these are the most serious crimes, which are the ones we want to see happen the least, and yet we're keeping them out of the systems that are going to make them less likely to recidivate. It doesn't actually make sense from a public safety standpoint to bar those people from these, these avenues. And on top of that, as it relates to specifically the felony look-back, as we see, the farther out you go from the point of release without another conviction, without another arrest, the likelihood of recidivism is drastically falls down to the point where I believe at seven years, a person that has a record is no more likely to commit a crime again than a typical person that has never committed a crime. And yet we're give, we have a look-back period that's an extra year past that, and in reality, depending on how these look-back periods are interpreted, if it requires to be after the complete sentence, which includes supervision or probation, you're actually looking at potentially nine, 10, or more years before it goes into effect. So it's, it's not serving anybody's, it's actually running counter to the public safety to have these long periods of time and these restrictions, because these are the people that we really want to be trying to keep from recidivating, and getting jobs is the best way to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you very much for your, your testimony. We have been joined by, online by Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Henderson?
Hi, Councilmember Bonds, I'm here. I, I've been listening in, but I don't have any particular questions for this set of panelists.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, your testimony. Our next panel, Laura Brown, Nisha Paris, Liz London, Alex Samuels, Diana Alboyd. And you can take, we can take four at the witness table. And we'll start with Ms. Brown, who is online. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning.
All right, we're ready to take your testimony.
Great, thanks. Good morning, Chairperson Bonds and members of the committee. My name is Laura Brown, Executive Director of First Shift Justice Project, a DC legal services organization that represents pregnant and caregiving workers. I testify today in support of B26-0182, the Universal Paid Leave Portability Act of 2025, which will make an essential change to DC's paid leave benefits program by allowing DC workers who are recently unemployed to receive paid leave benefits. The answers to two fundamental questions explain why we need this bill. First, why would someone who is unemployed need leave from work? The answer is, they wouldn't. DC's paid leave program provides monetary benefits, not leave. The paid leave law says, nothing in this subchapter should be construed to provide job protection to any eligible individual beyond that to which an individual is entitled under the DC Family Medical Leave Act. No job protection equals no right to leave. This bill would give unemployed workers the right to benefits. Second, why can't unemployed workers apply for unemployment Second, why can't unemployed workers apply for unemployment compensation? Answer, they're not eligible. Workers who experience childbirth, a serious health condition, or a family caregiving responsibility are not available for work. If they apply for unemployment, they will be denied. The appropriate safety net program for a temporary period of unavailability for work is DC paid leave benefits. Workers who become unemployed because they don't have job protection, are laid off, or are illegally fired, should be eligible for paid leave benefits. If you don't have job protection, your employer doesn't have to save your job for you when you go on leave. Pregnant workers have a right to job protection under the Protecting Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. However, parents who didn't give birth and workers who have a serious health condition or care for a family member with a serious health condition need to qualify for job protection under the DC FMLA. To be covered by DC FMLA, a DC worker has to work for an employer with 20 or more DC-based employees, have completed one full year of work with the same employer, and have worked at least 1,000 hours in the year immediately preceding the request for leave. Under the federal FMLA, approximately 44% of workers don't qualify for leave and 62% of low-wage workers don't qualify. Most workers don't qualify for leave because they don't meet the one-year employment requirement. The DC FMLA has the same requirement, so it follows that a similar percentage of DC workers are not covered by DC FMLA. Workers who aren't covered by DC FMLA and lose their jobs when they go on leave should still be able to access paid leave benefits when they need them. Laid off workers whose former bosses have paid the paid leave tax and reported wages from the last 52 weeks should also be able to access benefits. Consider all the workers in this city who have been laid off in the last four months: contractors for the federal government, employees of nonprofits who lost federal government funding, employees of DC businesses who have lost revenue because of reductions in the federal workforce. Laid off workers have also lost their eligibility for DC paid leave benefits. Finally, illegally fired workers should not lose eligibility for paid leave benefits. Workers who are pregnant, have a serious health condition, or have caregiving responsibilities are all protected identities under our DC Human Rights Act. If you are the victim of illegal discrimination and get fired, you'll lose your eligibility for paid leave benefits. First Shift lawyers routinely counsel clients who are fired during pregnancy. This year, the paid leave benefits program celebrates five years, a good time to assess the program and make improvements. Instead, the program is currently being eroded and a significant portion of taxes paid for benefits are being diverted for other purposes. We already have money in the paid leave fund to cover benefits for people who are recently unemployed. Making DC paid leave benefits portable, attached to the worker instead of the job, is an issue of fundamental fairness and will strengthen the program by making it more inclusive. I welcome future opportunities to work with the committee and to respond to any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We'll now hear from Ms. Parris. Yes. And if you can press, there you go. All right, you're on.
Good morning, Councilmember Bonds and members of the committee. My name is Nisha Parris and I live in Ward Five in the Brookland neighborhood of DC. I'm a member of Jews United for Justice, a community of thousands of Jews and Allies committed to advancing justice in DC. My testimony today will focus on the importance of DC paid leave and why benefits must be made portable. I know firsthand how important it is to be able to spend time with your children after birth and not to have to choose between your income and caregiving responsibilities. Every mother needs time away from her professional work to care for her newborn and most cannot afford to take unpaid leave. I married into the Jewish faith and I feel so grateful that through my conversion classes I learned about Jewish values through Torah study and community engagement. Torah teaches the need to provide service to family and our sacred texts implore employers to do right by their employees. When people lose their income, they need to provide for their families. That loss is a threat to their very existence. As a DC worker and a lead teacher at a DC public charter school, I knew I would be able to benefit from the paid family leave program, but I almost missed out. My employer, who had originally told me I had a job for the following academic year, upon learning I was pregnant, tried to terminate me. With the support from the families I served, who learned of my situation and put tremendous pressure on my employer to keep me, the administrators made me reapply for my job and finally hired me back, eventually rescinding the termination letter to grant me continuous service from which to claim DC paid family leave. My contract was reinstated just one working day before the school year started. Without pressure from the community and my perseverance to stand up for myself and get my employer to do the right thing, I would have been eight months pregnant and unemployed with no access to paid leave. The knowledge that I could lose my paid family benefits along with my job terrified me. I had sleepless nights and suffered perinatal anxiety. When I was seven months pregnant, I got a cold which worsened to pneumonia and my OB recommended rest and stress reduction. But my situation made this impossible. I spent months waiting to hear whether I'd be renewed, frantically searching for work elsewhere in the event that I was to be unemployed and when I should have spent that time preparing for the birth of my baby. When I gave birth, I was able to fully benefit from DC paid family leave, but I was exhausted from fighting against pregnancy discrimination and enduring the months of uncertainty. Fortunately, I was able to come through this experience, pay my bills, sustain my family, and care for my baby girl who's here with me today, baby Joanie. This was all made possible by DC paid family leave. No pregnant woman should endure pregnancy discrimination from her employer, and no pregnant person should worry about being barred access to paid leave benefits because of that discrimination. It was the most challenging experience of my life and one I would hope to prevent from happening to anyone else. Motherhood is the hardest job I've ever had, along with other types of care work. It's also one of the jobs that society least values. Despite that, I found it to be quite a powerful experience and a vehicle for social change. Mothers may be overlooked in society, but we often are our children's first teachers, first caretakers, and the first leaders. If we value children as much as we say we do, we must first value their mothers, their fathers, their families. We need to increase protections for parental leave and remove all barriers that could threaten the parent or caregiver from accessing it. Let's start with this amendment, because it's the one true and tangible way to provide such protections to DC residents who desperately need them. We owe it to children to take care of their parents. We owe it to families who cannot afford to lose the income when they welcome a new baby. We owe it to women to value the work of birth giving and of mothering. It is imperative that the council pass the portability amendment to make sure paid leave is meaningfully accessible to everyone who is entitled to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony and for making today real for all of us. Thank you. Ms. London? All right, please, we'll take your testimony.
Good morning, Councilmember Bonds and members of the committee. My name is Liz London and I live in Petworth in Ward Four. I'm also a member of Jews United for Justice, a community of Jews and Allies focused on advancing social, racial, and economic justice in DC. As a parent who benefited from DC's paid family leave program with both of my children, I'm here to offer testimony on why this program is so vital and why its benefits must be protected and made portable. My investment in this program is rooted in values instilled in me from a young age and linked to my Jewish faith, that work should be dignified, that employees should be treated fairly, and that we are connected in an interdependent web, responsible for each other's well-being. When I made the decision to move to self-employment, it carried a number of risks and trade-offs, but one of the biggest was losing benefits like parental leave, or so I thought. That's why I was so relieved and thrilled to find out that DC has a paid family leave program that I could pay into and would allow me to take significant leave after my children were born without sacrificing the ability to earn income. In fact, one of the things that makes me most proud to be a DC resident is this program and my ability to benefit from it. I've shared that pride with many people, both inside and outside the district. Having time with each of my children after they were born and to allow my body a full recovery was a tremendous gift. As a self-employed person, had I not had access to DC's paid family leave benefits, I would have had to decide between foregoing any income for a significant stretch of time or shortening irreplaceable time to bond with and care for my new infant. I am so grateful I never had to make that decision. The reality that those who lose their job, including potentially due to discrimination based on disclosing their pregnancy, would then be stripped of access to the very program they need most, does not honor the spirit of this landmark program. That's why I'm here today. That's why it is imperative that council pass the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025 and ensure these benefits can actually be accessed by everyone entitled to them. Our paid leave program is one of the best things about our city, and equitable access to it, supported by the portability amendment, is crucial for a just DC. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And let's see. Ms. Samuels? Okay, Alex, okay.
Good morning, Councilmember, let me do this real quick. Good morning, Councilmember Bonds, member of the committee. My name is Alex Samuels. I'm here to testify today in support of the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025. My organization, DC Jobs with Justice, is a coalition of labor organizations, community groups, faith-based organizations, and student groups dedicated to protecting the rights of working people, supporting community struggles, and promoting racial justice to build a more just DC. DC's paid family leave program certainly accomplishes these goals. A qualitative report from the Institute for Women's Policy Research has found numerous benefits of the program, including the ability to care for newborn with reduced financial stress, increased gender equality in caregiving roles, improved mental well-being of recipients, and the removal of a gap in employer-provided benefits. Generally speaking, the program has been extremely successful with anecdotal evidence that speaks to its ease of use and level of financial support for DC residents who would otherwise struggle to balance caregiving responsibilities with a career. However, this bill responds to a significant gap in PFL coverage. If an individual loses their job just before they become eligible for the benefit, they cannot qualify for it, no matter what their employer has been paying into the fund on their behalf. The state of affairs affects many DC residents because federal job protections apply only in limited circumstances. For example, many people are eligible for PFL but are not eligible for Family Medical Leave Act protections that allow people to return to their jobs only if they have a full year of employment for the same employer, if that employer has at least 20 employees, and if they've worked at least 1,000 hours in the last year, approximately half-time. This excludes many low-wage workers who DC's Paid Family Leave Act was specifically designed to support. As a result of these gaps, many employers can fire their workers before they take leave. DC's Office of Human Resources protects pregnancy, serious health conditions, and caregiving responsibilities. But if an employer illegally fires a worker, they still lose eligibility for PFL benefits. In addition, these employees are also disqualified from receiving unemployment compensation because they're not considered available for and actively seeking work. This means that workers who are fired prior to taking leave have no safety net while they are actively caring for a newborn themselves or an ailing family member. To reiterate, however, these workers' employers have already paid for the benefit. Over the course of their employment, the company has paid into the fund from which the benefits are paid. As a result, although the money that the worker should receive already exists, they cannot access it due to a quirk of the law. Councilmember Bonds, this is a common sense bill that solves one of the biggest problems with the district's paid family leave program. It does this by leveraging funding that already exists because the funding has already been collected for this exact use. In a time when the budget will likely be under significant stress for a whole host of reasons, it would be a triumph for the council to announce programmatic improvements for the people of the district. Thank you for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And now, Ms. Alboard.
Good morning, Chairwoman Bonds and the council. My name is Diana Kelly Alboard. I've lived in DC with my family since 2012, first in Ward Two and now in Ward Four. And I was present with the council when the Paid Leave Act originally passed back in 2016. And like so many in that packed room and across the district, I was so proud of this councilful taking, the important step of giving workers and families the protections that they need to maintain their jobs and support their loved ones in times of joy and crisis. And I testified for the first time before this council in May 2017 to call for the full implementation of the bill. And again, we were proud of this council for ensuring that it was fully funded. And since then, the paid leave program was launched and expanded and has benefited thousands of workers, including many colleagues and neighbors of mine. But not every worker who has earned leave benefits under the program has gotten to actually use them. So I am here today to urge the council to pass the Paid Leave Portability Act to enable every DC worker to use their rightfully earned benefits. This amendment is needed to fulfill the spirit of the Paid Leave Act and protect all DC workers from unexpected issues like fluctuations in the job market or pregnancy-related workplace discrimination that could arbitrarily cost them their benefits just when they're needed most. Universal paid leave is a very important, very personal issue for me and my family because I know firsthand what it's like to go through a medical crisis without it. In the spring of 2012, my first child was born in an emergency C-section at 24 weeks of gestation. It was a miracle that he survived at all. He weighed less than two pounds. All the odds were against him. His lungs collapsed on the second day, and he spent weeks connected to life-saving machines while we waited to see if we could get to keep him. He was in the NICU for over 100 days and then required surgery and specialists at Children's Hospital for years after that. I ran out of the leave I had from my job long before he was discharged from the NICU. I was lucky to be allowed to take an unpaid leave of absence without losing my position. Even though my husband and I had well-paying jobs, insurance, savings for our baby, we still came so close to the financial edge during our son's first year of life while he lay there struggling to learn to breathe. It was a terrifying time for my family, and it took us years to recover emotionally and financially. And many, many DC families facing their own medical issues don't even have the advantages that we had. Too many workers face discrimination or termination due to their pregnancies or other medical conditions. And all too quickly, a medical crisis becomes a financial crisis and pushes households to the brink. My second pregnancy was considered very high risk due to my earlier experience, and so I required frequent monitoring appointments throughout my final trimester. What if my having those pregnancy complications had then cost me my job? Imagine realizing that your baby will have a long and expensive stay in the NICU at the same time that you suddenly have no income and no benefits, even though you have been working in DC for years and your employer had paid into the system. Amending the Universal Paid Leave Act to correct this portability issue will change lives, helping workers stay in their homes, avoid medical debt, bankruptcy, while they care for their families during some of life's hardest moments. It is time to fix this loophole and support all the families across the district who have no idea that a dangerously premature baby is in their future, just like I didn't. It's a smart policy for DC and it's the right thing to do for workers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Please pass the portability amendment.
Thank you very much for your testimony as well. I do have a few questions. I wanted to, Mr. Samuels, I wanted to ask you about, you indicated that the law excludes, in fact, all of you, the law excludes workers that leave their job. And your concern is about those that leave their job because of no fault of their own. You pointed out that employees are fired before they can take advantage of their benefits. Can you give me some indication of what the data that you may have that could help me substantuate that point?
I think if that's all right, I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Laura Brown at First Shift Justice Project, who might have a better at First Shift Justice Project, who might have a better sense of the data than I do.
All right, Ms. Brown, you're on.
All right. This is a difficult issue because you have to prove a negative. There is data from the Department of Employment Services a little bit that talks about the percentage of workers who are turned down for benefits because they don't have current employment. But our experience at First Shift is that most people, if they don't have current employment, don't apply. So they would never show up on the data that the DOES collects. So it's difficult to prove. And there are many, I mean, we serve 200 clients a year for legal services, and then we serve hundreds more in terms of outreach and have, you know, experiences having conversations with them where they've talked to us about how they don't, they can't apply for paid leave benefits because they are not eligible, because their HR department tells them that or because they just know because they went on the website or something like that. And so, you know, there may be out there some academic research about that, but it's hard because we're DC, we're not, like, I found national statistics for FMLA, but I could not find DC FMLA-specific statistics. So that's the best I can do with the response to that.
All right. Well, I appreciate that and your effort of trying to bring some clarity to that messaging that we're hearing today. I'm very curious as to how do we, how do we, you know, in our government, we use a lot of our resources that are coupled on issues, trying to bring down the negatives that we have in the community. So I'd be very curious if we ever can get that kind of data, so that that would be very helpful.
You know, one thing that could be helpful is that we have tried to collect this information, but we're very small as an organization. And so we did conduct a survey of Ward Seven and Eight residents. That was less than 100 people, to be honest, but, which is why I didn't raise it. But it was specifically focused on caregivers as opposed to pregnancy. And our, you know, that small survey showed that 50% of the people who, you know, we surveyed either suffered an adverse job consequence or job loss because of caregiving responsibilities that they had for family members. And so that's a small, small sample. But, you know, it's telling that 50% of the people. And so those are people that would never show up again on DOES's radar.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that response. I wanted to also, I believe it was... Ms. Alvord, thank you again for being here and putting your story on the record. I know it must be hard. Thank you very much. You indicated that individuals lose their job for pregnancy-related workplace discrimination. So is there data that I can use that substantuates that statement? I mean, anecdotally, all of us know individuals, but do we have data?
I don't have a specific DC-related statistic to cite for you, but, I mean, here on the panel, we have, you know, a lived example. I think it's more common than we would want it to be.
Okay. I appreciate that response. Thank you very much. I don't know if my colleague who has joined us, Councilmember Louis George from Ward Four, if you want to be acknowledged now and may have some questions, please.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairperson Bonds, and thank you for holding today's hearing and for including my bill, B-26182, the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025. I was pleased to be joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Allen, Henderson, Nadeau, Parker, Pinto, and Robert White, on the introduction of this bill. I wrote and introduced this bill because caregiving and the need for paid leave is deeply personal for me. Nearly 10 years ago, I had to take leave to care for my father, who got sick and ultimately passed away. And even since then, last year, having cared for my husband as he gave his kidney to his father and the ongoing care that that took, and even this past year for me, having to have an emergency C-section and my husband needing to care for me after having an emergency C-section, being in these situations, you know, have allowed me to even be more sort of conscious of how we think about caregiving and how important caregiving is. Caregiving is considered to be what's known as sort of informal work, but in every way that counts, it is work in service of others, work that keeps families and communities together, and work that deserves dignity and recognition. This bill would allow workers in the district to receive paid family and medical leave benefits when they are between jobs, provided that they are not receiving unemployment benefits at the same time and have worked for a covered employer for part or all of the past year. Because of their health or caregiving status, these workers are often ineligible for unemployment benefits because they could not be, they would not be considered sort of ready, willing, and able to work. The Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025 would give DC workers economic stability while they care for a new child, support an ill family member, or recover from a serious health condition. Because the district's universal paid leave system is funded through tax payments in advance of benefits being allocated, the employer has already contributed the funds to cover the cost of these benefits, regardless of whether the worker is still employed by the company. And I think that's important to note. I'm grateful for today's hearing, and I appreciate our witnesses for making time to speak with us today and also being willing to share their stories and be vulnerable and open to sharing their stories in this way. With that, I want to ask a few questions to the panel two of witnesses. Ms. Brown, I want to come to you. Do you believe that the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act sort of aligns with the original intent of the district's Universal Paid Leave Act?
Yes. I was involved in the effort to get the law passed, and I remember having conversations with staffers on the council about how the law didn't provide job protection and how could we pass a paid leave law that didn't provide job-protected leave. And I was reassured that even though the law didn't provide job protection, it would allow unemployed workers to be able to access the benefits as long as they had reported wages during some or all of the preceding 52 weeks. And so that was our expectation as advocates going into the implementation phase. But unfortunately, the Department of Employment Services interpreted the statute in a way that was inconsistent with that expectation.
Understood. And Ms. Albert, Alfred, as a longtime advocate of paid leave, I want to ask you that same question. Do you believe sort of that the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act aligns with the original intent of the district's Paid Leave Act?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I do because the name is universal. That means everyone, that means everyone who works in DC should be covered by it, and it shouldn't be, I mean, even current events have shown us, you can do nothing wrong and still you've lost your job. And it wasn't a reflection of you or your performance, but it can still happen. And the way that this is written currently, that means that even if you had worked for 20 years before, you know, your partner was ill, all of a sudden, if those two things happen in the same month, you're there with no safety net. And I don't think that that's what we all were cheering for when it passed originally. I think we all thought it meant the Universal Paid Leave Act.
Yeah. Ms. Paris, there are discrimination, you know, protections in place for pregnant persons, but obviously, illegal discrimination is pervasive despite these protections. Can you talk, talk sort of based on your experience about ways that employers can evade these protections and why paid leave portability is needed?
Absolutely. I think it depends. In some certain circumstances, employees could be within their introductory period, and sometimes that's a very long time, like 52 weeks or longer, sometimes two to three years. And while you cannot terminate someone on the basis of their pregnancy status, you can draw on that loophole to give them, and if they could be let go as an employee, and in that case, that happened to me. And while there are protections, there are plenty of ways in which you're not protected under that, under that specific law of the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And I, the question from Councilmember Bonds and what the data shows, I think that's a really important point. We need to collect more data on this. As someone who has been advocating within my local community, I know that I'm not alone, and I know that a lot of pregnant people who have experienced discrimination, if they have won some kind of settlement with their employer, they are gagged by a, by a non-disclosure act, an NDA, and they feel that they are in silence going forward to talk about it. So I think that's another issue that can skew the data. And I also think that the trauma associated with it, even if it does come out okay in the way that it did for me, finally, I was able to benefit, it does take a certain toll. When you're exhausted from new motherhood, the possibility that you would then go out and engage is, it takes a long time to gather your strength again. But I think that we could definitely do a lot to collect more data and support anyone who's gone through that specific experience.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. London, I want to thank you for testifying about your experience, especially as a Ward Four resident. One, once, one concern is that the portability bill doesn't align sort of with the intent because these workers sort of don't have employers. Can you talk more about your experience accessing paid leave as a self-employed district resident?
Sure. Yeah, as I mentioned in my testimony, I was really surprised, pleasantly surprised that I had the opportunity to, to have any kind of benefit at all. I didn't know, and I know that, sort of like raising awareness around the ability to access paid family leave for self-employed people has been something that's been talked about. I only knew about it because a friend of mine who also works for herself told me about the program. I was able to start paying into it, like, just in the nick of time, that aligned with being able to access the benefit when my daughter was born. So, you know, I was able to access it. I was also able to see how the benefits expanded from my first pregnancy to my second. But I do think in terms of like education and awareness, it really was entirely word of mouth, and had I not had that connection, I don't know that I ever would have known that it even existed.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Ms. Brown, before I close on this round, is there anything else that you want to just make sure we know that's important, you know, as we consider, you know, furthering this legislation and markup, what are any things that we should be considering as we move forward?
Top of mind, the issue of data's come up. There is lots of data about people who get fired during pregnancy. There are four national organizations, National Partnership for Women and Families, National Women's Law Center, A Better Balance, and Center for Work-Life Law, that all have data. So I can get you data on that. The second thing is that we've talked a lot about pregnancy because that is what has been offered to us by people who have been sharing their experiences. But you brought up several instances in your own personal life that did not involve pregnancy, but that involved caregiving for a family member. And I just want to stress that it's totally legal. The pregnancy situations where people are losing their jobs are illegal, but it is 100% right now completely legal to fire someone who has a caregiving responsibility or a serious health condition if they're not covered by FMLA. And so that is a very important reason to pass this portability law because huge groups of people who have these other reasons, not pregnancy, to access paid leave benefits cannot because, as we just heard, under the stats for federal FMLA, 62% of low-wage workers don't have access to any kind of leave. And so it's an important point to, not to at all be dismissive or undermine our pregnant people who have struggled and who have suffered from termination. I mean, that's what First Shift does all day, is deal with those situations. But we cannot forget that there are these huge groups of people that can legally be denied.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to this panel. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bonds.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Louis George. We also have been joined by Councilmember Brooke Pinto. Councilmember, all right.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry, I was having some tech issues this morning. I just want to thank you all so much for being here, and the testimony was, I think, really important to hear. I appreciate you, Chair Bonds and Councilmember Louis George, for introducing the portability bill. I think it's a especially time-sensitive and important issue to work on now. These issues were very important before as well, but as we think about so many DC workers losing their jobs and thinking about creative ways that we can help secure benefits and secure financial stability, I think the transfer of benefits is one such way. And so I appreciate all of the effort and the advocacy and testimony there. I also appreciate you, Chairwoman, holding a hearing today on my bill, the Fair Hiring Opportunities for Public Employment, which we call the HOPE Amendment Act. We need to do more as a city to help our returning citizens secure housing and employment to ensure a more successful reentry when they come home. Our returning citizens face an unemployment rate in DC nearly five times higher than the general population, and we have to expand our hiring pathways. One of the things that this bill seeks to do is look at our obligation within our local government to make sure that we are expanding opportunities for public sector employment. We have great transitional employment programs in DC like Project Empowerment, but what we hear is that participants are often facing difficulty transitioning from those programs into full-time employment. And so the HOPE Act ensures that their program participation and job performance are meaningfully considered during hiring and that job performance and participation in district-supported programs are heavily weighted in hiring decisions, which will help participants move from temporary work to full-time career pathways. This bill sets clear objective criteria for how criminal histories can be reviewed, ensuring that only relevant offenses are considered and help employers focus more on rehabilitation and readiness rather than past records. This bill also formalizes a hiring preference for those who complete reentry employment programs, promoting merit-based, forward-looking approaches. We know that too many applicants are denied because they lack help navigating the hiring process, and so this bill also requires agencies to connect applicants with community-based organizations that can help craft rehabilitation statements and navigate required documentation, ensuring that all of our candidates have a truly fair shot. For any applicant who is deemed unsuitable, the bill mandates clear written explanation of that decision, an appeals process, and guidance on whether they can reapply. Additionally, the Department of Human Resources must report annually on returning citizen hiring practices, rates, and denials, offering the council and public critical oversight tools to monitor equity and progress in this important space. This bill is also part of my larger PDC plan and package, which does a number of things focused on returning citizen hiring. Another bill that is in another committee focuses on hiring in the private sector and creates incentives for the private sector and a tax credit bonus to hire returning citizens. And so we're trying to fill many of the gaps that we see in this space, recognizing that securing access to employment and housing for returning citizens is not only important for equity, important for stability, but it's also important for our city's public safety. And so we need to keep moving forward in all of these areas. So thank you again, Chairwoman Bonds. Thank you for everyone being here today, and look forward to also continuing this support, as I said, for Councilor Louis's George's bill, George's bill, the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you very much. And I see Council- All right. Thank you very much. And I see Councilmember Henderson is back with us. Councilmember Henderson, is this a panel you'd like to speak with?
Thank you, Councilmember Barnes. Yes, but I now have to run to another meeting. I, I wanted to talk to the folks on, on this panel about the portability bill. I do appreciate the testimonies and of course, you know, being very open and sort of sharing your experiences. I did want to ask for, I think there was one of the witnesses who are self-employed and you said you only found out about your ability to pay in via word of mouth. What are some thoughts on how we can improve in terms of marketing so that folks know about this? Because when we first rolled out UPL, we did have quite a bit of money that went into the marketing portions. And I, I do believe that DOES still does quite a bit of marketing, but how do we better share this benefit with folks?
Thank you. I really appreciate the question and I also think it's worth, yeah, putting time and energy into thinking that through. I do think, yeah, there was an idea about perhaps when you, you know, register or if you like register as doing businesses or LC or anything like that, maybe there would be a place to inform you of the ability to access paid family leave. And I could, I could put some time into thinking of other ideas. I apologize, I haven't. But I absolutely agree that I think there's, there's really no way that I know of that somebody who's self-employed would sort of structurally be informed about that possibility. So I don't actually know of any way other than word of mouth that somebody would find out about it who works for themselves. And as we know now, you know, with the changing economy, I think there's more and more people who are self-employed and, you know, probably have no idea that this exists.
Yeah, that's, your testimony sort of made me think about that, right? We have plenty of ways for which we are able to inform people who are in traditional employer-employee relationships and working for businesses. But how, this is something I think we probably should explore a little bit further with DOES, especially since there has been, I would say, a shift, if you will, in the, in the DC area. But thank you guys so much for your testimony and for being here today.
So thank you again to the panel. Thank you for your testimony. And we have one additional public witness, Mindy Lee, I believe. Okay, she is online with us. Ms. Lee, will take your testimony?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So good afternoon, Councilmember Barnes and members of the committee. Thank you for including me today. My name is Mindy Lee and I am speaking to you today as a Ward Four constituent and a member of Jews United for Justice. And as you've heard, that's a community of thousands of Jews and allies committed to advancing social, racial, and economic justice in DC. As a soon-to-be first-time mom and one of many in the district who lost their job as a result of federal contract cuts, my testimony today will focus, as others have, on DC paid fam, on DC's paid family leave program and why it's critical that benefits be made portable. Early last month, the mid-sized consulting firm I worked for for over two years made the difficult decision to reduce the company's workforce by approximately 25% due to severe and unpredictable revenue drops caused by federal contractor cuts. Unfortunately, at eight months pregnant and after being approved for 12 weeks of paid maternity leave and FMLA leave, I was laid off as part of that reduction in workforce. Despite having paid into the DC paid family leave program through DC taxes and my employer reporting my wages to DOES, I'm now in the precarious position of not qualifying for DC paid leave and having no source of income as I prepare to recover from childbirth and bond with my newborn. Only days after losing my job and my family's primary source of income and health insurance, I emailed Ward Four Constituent Services and several members of the DC Council for guidance and support. While I appreciated the quick response of Constituent Services and support of DOES to apply and begin receiving DC unemployment insurance benefits, since I haven't given birth yet, I have continued to spend the last month of my pregnancy primarily focused on frantically finding a DC-based job with an employer who's willing and able to hire me. Today is actually my due date and despite my best efforts to leverage my personal and professional networks and my willingness to work up until I give birth, the window to find a job so that I can qualify for DC paid family leave has essentially closed. I know that I am one of many pregnant people in the district who have had the rug pulled out from under them at one of the most vulnerable times in our life, which should be a special and sacred time of preparing to become a new parent has been tainted not only by the stress of losing my job and my family's primary livelihood, but also the stress of trying and failing to access critical district support and benefits that I have contributed to as a DC resident. At the same time, I'm also well aware that I am one of the more fortunate individuals. I am fortunate enough to have the support of family and friends from near and far, as well as Jewish organizations like JUFJ, who are actively organizing across the DMV area to support federal workers and individuals like me. However, my Jewish values and sacred texts have taught me that I cannot separate myself from my community and that we all have a responsibility for each other's well-being. Everyone at some point in their, in their life, as others have said and as we, as you've spoken about, needs to take time away from work to care for a relative, deal with a serious personal illness, and/or welcome or bond with a child. Last year, I even spent a semester as a Johns Hopkins part-time MBA student learning about my community in Ward Four and partnering with First Shift to gather testimonies on this very issue. I heard hearing stories of DC residents who couldn't afford to take unpaid leave and were left in dire straits because their DC paid leave benefits were not portable. It is imperative that, that the council pass the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act of 2025 to clarify the intent of the law and make sure paid leave benefits are meaningfully accessible to everyone who is entitled to them. I am grateful that the council is meeting today and that I am able to testify and share my personal story. There is so much in the district and in our world that we as constituents and you as our leaders do not have control over. But clarifying this law and being a national leader in paid family leave is something that this council can do, that will make a massive difference, not only in my life, but in the lives of countless of district residents. Thank you for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you also for your testimony today. Ms. Lee, I did want to, if I could, ask of you, when you make a statement and you say that eight months of pregnancy, you had been approved for 12 weeks of paid maternity leave and FMLA leave, and you were laid off due to a reduction in workforce. And then you go on and you inform us that, you know, in your opinion, you have paid into paid family leave through your taxes. Can you help me understand that statement and help the public understand that statement?
Sure. So I, my, the company that I worked for, still, they had as part of their benefits package, paid leave. And, and so that was part of my benefits package. When I was hired, I had worked through their third-party insurance provider and, and gone through their resources to say, okay, they've decided, they were an employer that said that they could and wanted to provide paid leave. So they didn't necessarily need to utilize the, I, I wouldn't have necessarily utilized the DC paid family leave program. This is also a Virginia-based firm, but I was a remote worker in DC. That said, so that company made a, a decision that I, that their employees wouldn't necessarily need access to the DC paid family leave program. However, my wages were still reported to DOES. I still paid into, to the program and the workforce, my layoff. And this is another thing that I think is important to clarify. My pregnancy status didn't protect me from a mass layoff or reduction in workforce. So it was completely legal that they fired, that I was laid off at eight months pregnant and left with no, no safety net. However, being a district resident, having paid into the program and, and paying DC taxes for over two years, that, as far as I understand it, would leave me, the only reason I'm not eligible to take advantage of DC paid leave is because I'm not currently employed and those, and, and can't claim the time worked as a D, as a DC remote worker. That's the only reason that I'm not eligible to, to take advantage of those benefits.
All right, if, if I hear you, you're, you're telling us that you paid into the paid leave program by being afforded the benefit from your employer when you were given a list of the benefits of the job that you were employed in. Am I correct?
I, I think so. It's a little complicated because they, they chose to provide leave through short-term disability and a, a short-term disability program and pay and supplement. Employers can make a decision as to are they going to use, and, and Laura, I would ask maybe Laura to jump in to clarify this, but my understanding of the DC paid family leave program from an employer's standpoint is that employers have the option. Do we want to just allow for unpaid leave and our workers can take advantage of the DC paid leave program since we're reporting wages and paying into the program anyways? That won't match their salary, their current salary necessarily. Employers can also take the approach that they use DC, the paid leave, the paid leave program to supplement their, their leave. Or they can say, we're just going to provide the leave and we're, we're still going to report wages, pay into the program, but actually we can afford and are able to provide our employees paid leave on their own. That third option is what the company that I worked for was, was doing. So I wouldn't have necessarily been, needed to utilize DC paid family leave had I not been laid off. However, like many federal workers and federal contractors who have paid leave through their jobs, I was put in the position of being laid off at a very late stage in my pregnancy and then being left with no safety net or options. I hope that helps to clarify.
It, it is complicated. I, I appreciate your testimony today. And I'll turn to my colleague, Councilmember Louis George. She may have a question to two of you. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for sharing your story with us. And I'm, I am so incredibly sorry you are experiencing this incredibly stressful situation during what should be a peaceful and joyful period as you await the arrival of your new child. I'm glad to hear that DC agencies and constituent services were able to help you as, to do that work. But I think, as you may clear, there is still a critical gap that exists in the universal paid leave that we need to fill through this portability bill. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to share more about sort of what would having access to paid family leave through portability mean for you and your family.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I don't have family locally or close by. I'm, I've been spending the last several, I, I, I've been spending the last month of my, of my pregnancy stressed about work, anxious about finding work, trying to navigate DC, the DC paid family leave program and, and applying for unemployment so I can get unemployment insurance, DC unemployment insurance benefits for as long as possible. You know, luckily, my husband and I have some savings built up and, but I, I think we're going to burn through it pretty quickly. As, as he's a contract worker as well and we were relying on my ability to take, to take paid leave. And now we, we really don't have a lot of options and I'll, you know, put out there that any DC unemployment insurance is a fraction of what I could have qualified for under the DC paid family leave program because it, there, there just is more, the way the calculation, the benefits calculator works, it's a fraction of what I, I could be making. Again, I consider myself in a more fortunate situation than many hourly, hourly workers or, or part-time workers because I had a pretty decent salary at my, at my previous job. But now I'm going to be going into childbirth and bonding with my new child and making the assessment of when, how long should I wait? Should I wait six weeks, eight weeks? How long should I go unpaid? In, before I start looking for, continuing to look for work and find a full-time job that has insurance and benefits and, and can provide that for my, for my family. And that is not, that's now a part of many people, that's a part of their calculation. But there's no assurances and there's no, it adds a, an incredible amount of, of stress and, and concern. And I will say this is, you know, this is, should be again, a secret, special time to be able to bring a new child into this world and bond with, bond with my first child. And I'm someone who has been through, I'm a, I'm a brain cancer survivor. I'm someone who has been through intense medical experiences before and had, and has had to take FMLA leave prior. And was, and not in DC, but in another state and made it through stressful experiences. But I have never experienced stress and anxiety in this way before, especially because it feels, one, so random and unfair that I was laid part of this mass layoff. But also that it feels like I, these are benefits that I'm entitled to as a DC resident and that I, like, they're there, I should be able to access them. They've been, they're paid for, I'm just not eligible to apply and access them.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing that. And thank you, thank you for your detailed answer there. Thank you, Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Pinto, are, do you want to speak with this panelist?
Thank you very much. I don't have any additional questions, but thank you for sharing your story.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Lee. And we're, we're there with you. Please know that.
Yeah, and, and thank you again for, for holding this hearing and, and, and to the other, others who have testified as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, this concludes our public witnesses. Okay, all right. And we'll now turn to our government witnesses. And we will hear hear from have to go through my notes to make sure I'm okay. So we have with us today, um, our government witnesses, Dr. Unique Morris Hughes, Director of the Department of Employment Services, and Mr. Charles Hall, the Director of the Department of Human Resources. And they both will um, provide testimony for us today. And um, will be able to answer some of the burning questions from the last two panelists that were presented to us. And I will swear them in. If you raise your right hand, do you swear and affirm that your testimony presented today and any statements that you make before us will be truthful and complete? All right. Thank you. Dr. Hughes, you can begin when you are ready.
Good morning. Uh, good morning, Chairperson Bonds, council members and staff of the Committee on Executive Administration and Labor. My name is Dr. Unique Morris Hughes and I am the Director of the DC Department of Employment Services. And I'm pleased to testify before you today on behalf of Mayor Muriel Bowser on Bill twenty-six dash forty-three, the Marion S. Berry Summer Youth Employment Program Credible Service Benefit Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, Bill twenty-six dash one-eight-two, the Universal Paid Family Leave Portability Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, and Bill twenty-six dash one-eight-five, the Fair Hearing Opportu-, excuse me, the Fair Hiring Opportunities of Public Employment, HOPE Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. Each of the bills before the committee today touch on programs and communities that are central to the mission of the Department of Employment Services. I look forward to discussing these bills and the impact they will have on our programs and the people that we serve. Bill twenty-six dash forty-three, the Marion S. Berry Summer Youth Employment Program Credible Service Benefit Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, MBSYEP is a locally funded initiative that provides district youth ages fourteen to twenty-four with an enriching summer employment experience through subsidized placement in the public and private sectors. MBSYEP is a beloved program that has served as a pathway to employment for thousands of young people for over forty years. Through MBSYEP, DOES strives to provide our participants with the opportunity to earn money and gain meaningful work experience, learn and develop the skills, attitudes, and commitment necessary to succeed in today's world of work, gain exposure to various exciting career industries, and interact with dynamic working professionals and a positive work environment. Next month, we will launch the forty-sixth year of MBSYEP, serving over twelve thousand district youth between the ages of fourteen to twenty-four from June twenty-third until August first. DOES knows that providing access and exposure to career opportunities early and often can significantly impact a youth trajectory. The district has made significant investments in workforce development of the district's youth by expanding programming beyond MBSYEP to include MBYLI, the High School Internship Program, Youth Pre-Aprenticehip, and the Career Ready Early Scholars Program, the last of which serves our youngest DC residents from ages nine to thirteen years old. Through our work, DOES provides occupational skill training, work experience, academic enrichment, and life skills to young people throughout the year. The Marion S. Berry Summer Youth Employment Credible Service Benefit Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, that is a mouthful, um, mandates the district government employ, employees who previously participated in SYEP are credited with time served in SYEP for retirement. The legislation establishes that an individual would be eligible for this credit if they participated in SYEP at any point since the program's inception in nineteen eighty. However, in compliance with the district's record retention policies, DOES no longer has access to participant enrollment or completion dating as far back as nineteen eighty. The current IT system has only been collecting this sort of data since two thousand and twelve. And given the data and potential administrative barriers, DOES believes that the implementation of the bill um, would pose significant uh, challenges. However, I do look forward to working with you, Councilmember McDuffie, and members of the Committee of Executive and Labor and Director Hall to address how we can improve the legislation to maintain the spirit of the bill. Now, on the Universal Paid Family Leave Portability Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, the mission of the Office of Paid Family Leave is to administer the paid leave program for covered employees in the District of Columbia. The district began collecting employer taxes on July first of two thousand and nineteen and administering benefits on July one, two thousand and twenty. As of October one, two thousand and twenty-two, the program provides leave for events including, but not limited to, bonding with the new child, caring for one's own serious health issues, caring for a family member with serious health issues, and prenatal medical care for pregnant women. Since the inception, DOES has administered over a hundred and thirty million dollars in benefits. The Universal Paid Family Leave Portability Act of two thousand and twenty-five amends the Universal Paid Leave Act of two thousand and sixteen to provide that an individual may be eligible for benefits if they're unemployed and not receiving unemployment insurance benefits. DOES o- opposes this bill as it conflicts with the original intent of the act. The act makes numerous references to leave that indicates the law was meant to apply to leave taken from employment. For example, the act requires individuals to provide written notice to his or her employer of the need for the use of paid leave benefits, which is section one oh seven, uh, sub-paragraph A, sub-paragraph one. The act clearly contemplates an individual currently has an employer to whom such notice must be delivered. DOES is aware of the challenges that current climate has created for a number of our caregivers who would have otherwise been eligible for paid family leave are also not eligible for unemployment compensation because they may not be ready or able to work. However, amending the law in a way that directly conflicts with the original intent of the act is not the proper path to address the problem. Nonetheless, DOES is understanding and sympathetic to the circumstances and is supportive of exploring what district resources would be available for these individuals. Now, for the Fair Opportunities for Public uh, Employment, the HOPE Amendment Act, I think I'll just refer to it as the HOPE Act. Um, DOES through its Division of State Initiative oversees transitional employment programs designed to serve district residents experiencing multiple barriers to employment, including court involvement, prior incarceration, housing insecurity, history of substance abuse, and educational deficiencies. The largest program under the DSI umbrella is Project Empowerment, which provides job readiness and life skills training, short-term subsidized work experience, which we call transitional jobs, as well as ancillary wraparound services and support. Project Empowerment equips participants with the tools and work experience needed for them to be success, to successfully transition to unsubsidized, gainful employment. Additionally, DSI participates in the federal bonding program. The goal of the federal bonding program is to help reduce barriers to employment for justice-involved individuals who have difficulty in securing employment due to an arrest or conviction of a crime through the insurance of fidelity bonds on behalf of the at-risk job seeker. The program's mission is to give employers peace of mind by bonding job candidates that are considered to be high-risk. Employers receive bonds free of charge as an incentive to hire applicants. The federal bonding program was designed to reimburse the employer for any loss due to fraud, dishonesty, dishonesty, theft, loss of money or property, and damage up to five thousand dollars for the first six months of paid training and another six months of employment. In addition, in FY twenty-four, DOES was awarded the Partners for Reentry Opportunities for Workforce Development, which we call PROUD, uh, grant from the Department of Justice and the Department of Labor to provide targeted employment services to federally incarcerated individuals as they approach community reentry. The program aims to provide the employment outcomes of returning citizens and public safety for all community members while increasing the capacity of justice and workforce system partnerships. The PROUD grant operates over a forty-two-month period and includes three stages of coordinated services. That's during incarceration in federal prisons, during time spent in residential reentry centers, and after release into community. DOES job readiness training supports PROUD's goal of aligning job training and skill development services provided to federally incarcerated individuals to labor market needs of the communities where they will live. In so doing, the program improves both the employment outcomes of returning citizens and public safety for all community members while increasing the capacity of justice and workforce systems partnership. By providing comprehensive support, the PROUD model empowers participants to secure long-term, sustainable employment and successfully reintegrate into their communities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you and the Committee on these important bills. I look forward to continuing the dialogue in these matters and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Dr. Hughes. Um, now we hear from Director Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmember Bonds and members of the Committee on Executive Administration and Labor. My name is Charles Hall and I have the privilege of serving as the Director of the DC Department of Human Resources. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill twenty-six dash zero-one-eight-five, the Fair Hiring Opportunities for Public Employment Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. Mayor Bowser has always shown an unwavering commitment to employing returning citizens in district government. In April, the mayor declared that, and the district government celebrated Second Chance Month to uplift returning citizens and provide resources that support their successful reintegration into the community. The district government hosted a series of events that highlighted employment opportunities, community support, and pathways to stability for justice-involved individuals. DCHR partnered with the Mayor's Office of Returning Citizens Affairs, or MORCA, during their pathways to the middle-class sessions and attended MORCA's Second Chance Month events where DCHR staff helped returning citizens identify employment opportunities within the district and apply to positions. The district's commitment to employing returning citizens is made clear in our hiring data. In FY twenty-four, approximately ninety-eight percent of applicants who had at least one law enforcement interaction were found suitable. Of the two percent of applicants who were found unsuitable, approximately half failed to respond to DCHR's request for an interview. While we share the council's values behind this legislation, we believe significant provisions are required to help accomplish its intended goals. The bill imposes significant new administrative burdens, weakens the district's merit-based hiring system, decreases opportunities for district residents, and increases the risk of discrimination against returning citizens. DCHR shares a common goal with council to provide as many employment opportunities to returning citizens as possible and we believe we can collaborate with council on other ways to enhance these opportunities. The bill imposes significant new duties on DCHR. Under the bill, DCHR must maintain and annually publish a list of qualifying transitional employment programs, create a new and additional criminal history report for applicants, maintain relationships with third-party organizations supporting returning citizens, create custom criminal history reports, shift suitability from a DCHR process to a collaborative one with agencies, and develop and oversee the implementation of a relevant screen across all district government positions. These new duties would be on top of the thousands of criminal background checks conducted by DCHR each year. The bill mandates the creation of a relevant cris- criminal history report for anyone with a conviction or pending charge that may relate to the performance of their job. This report is duplicative and administratively burdensome. DCHR has a contract with our vendor to receive criminal history information in the form of a nationwide FBI National Crime Information Center check, which generally includes all law enforcement interactions, including arrests. DCHR has never relied on any information outside of convictions as district law prohibits employers from considering non-convictions. Therefore, the proposed bill would not be adding any safeguards that do not already exist. Further, the bill mandates DCHR to coordinate suitability reviews with an agency representative. This measure creates a significant administrative delay in coordinating schedules and completing the, this work with individuals who previously have not been required to perform such work. This measure also creates a significant confidentiality and privacy risk as the bill would result in more individuals knowing an individual's criminal background. As a result, the bill increases the risk of discrimination against returning citizens. Currently, for agencies for which DCHR conducts suitability, only DCHR is privy to an individual's criminal history information. We recognize the profound impact that employment can have in rebuilding lives and creating pathways to success. With this responsibility, we are obligated to uphold the rights of those seeking employment. Employing agencies should not know about an applicant's prior law enforcement interactions, especially if such interactions would not affect someone's ability to do their job. The relevant screen contemplated by the bill creates an unnecessary step that would severely impact the district government's ability to process criminal background checks and would delay filling vacant positions. The bill mandates DCHR to collaborate with the hiring agency's representative to determine for each position what types of convictions are relevant. This alone adds a massive administrative burden. Each position is classified every year by the agencies and then provided a designation. DCHR has never relied on convictions that are not relevant to a position's duties. Moreover, DCHR already considers the relationship convictions have to the position as the most important suitability factor. The legislation provides additional administrative and compliance requirements that we believe will be challenging to effectuate. To effectively implement, implement this legislation, we must anticipate and recognize the significant demand it places on the district, district government when conducting background checks and complex investigations. Each agency will need dedicated resources to ensure compliance and efficiency. With at least one FTE serving as a hiring coordinator to collaborate with DCHR, some agencies may require even more. DCHR itself will need an investment in staffing. At least several new DCHR FTEs will be required to successfully implement this legislation. Bill twenty-six dash zero-one-eight-five seeks to codify many protections and practices which already exist. DCHR already adheres to industry standards and best practices in evaluating applicants' criminal histories. We already ensure fairness and opportunity in the hiring process and as a proud Second Chance City, we have demonstrated our commitment to supporting returning citizens and the data clearly supports this fact. Again, in FY twenty-four, ninety-eight percent of individuals who had at least one prior law enforcement interaction were found suitable for employment. Recognizing the intended purpose of increasing opportunities for returning citizens, we applaud council's efforts while acknowledging the potential unintended adverse consequences of this legislation. While we share the council's commitment to fairness and opportunity, we also welcome any opportunity to work with council to help returning citizens by considering alternative methods to strengthening the hiring process. I want to thank you for your time. I thank Mayor Bowser for the opportunity and the privilege to serve and I welcome any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, um, both for your testimony. Um, let's start with the um, discussion about Bill twenty-six one-eight-two, Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act. How would um, Department of Employment Services implement the bill given the current law?
So how would the Department of Employment Services implement the bill given the current law?
Yes.
Uh, it is a bit complicated um, because we have designed our processes um, and systems based on uh, the current law, which uh, looks at current employment and current wages of individual claimants or prospective claimants. Um, and so it, it would certainly be not just a shift in policy, but we would have to reorganize parts of our work to implement the, the proposed bill. I, I think though, it's important for me to know uh, is both what our interpretation of the legislation is um, and the rules which were council-approved um, that clarified the law, which is that there is a belief that paid family leave is used for time away from work. In my testimony, you hear me outline one of In my testimony, you hear me outline one of the requirements, which is that the employee has to provide written notice to their employer in order to take time off. And so I think it's very important to recognize that. There are other benefit programs in the district. There is unemployment insurance. I know that there was one person who testified that's currently collecting unemployment insurance. There are other benefit programs like SNAP and TANF and WIC. I am interested in furthering conversation about benefit coordination and looking at all of the benefits that are available in the District of Columbia, which quite frankly is of the most of many regions and localities and states, has the most robust set of benefits, and seeing if we could provide some information and shed some additional light, because there are benefits that are available. But we are pretty firm and grounded in our interpretation that it is time off from work.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I wanted it to be clear as to how the government is interpreting this very vital service, because we've heard today, perhaps from some of our public witnesses, that somehow there's a pay into the system when an individual is working, and so therefore it's paid, so therefore they should be able to access it when they need it. And so I really want, I really think as government, it's incumbent upon us to be clear as to what the current law says and what this amendment would do, which would change the policy.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if I have the opportunity to shed some more light on this idea of it being paid forward and advanced. If you take a step back at a 50,000-foot level, think about the values around benefit programs. As a value, in order for us to establish a fund where we could even pay out benefits, a community, private sector in this case, pays into a fund. And so, yes, employers and businesses are paying into a fund. We have to have that as a value in order to just establish the ability to pay benefits. It's the reason why benefit collection started a year prior to benefit administration. So it isn't necessarily tracking dollar for dollar for individuals. There will be people who will exit their employer without ever having to take paid family leave benefits, because there isn't a need that requires that. And that's okay, because we as a community and as a city have placed a value on paid family leave. Now, another thing I wanted to clarify is that self-employed individuals are paying into this, but sometimes I hear prospective claimants say, oh, I paid into the fund, and that's not correct. An individual, unless you are self-employed, does not pay into the fund. Your employer pays into the fund. But there's a whole science into how we arrive to, you know, collecting and generating enough revenue to pay for benefits into the fund. But we have got to have a firm set of principles and policies that allows us to establish a paid family leave benefit system, think "system" with a capital S, not a lowercase "s," that allows us to provide from those who need it while they are away from work. And that's what we've been doing, and quite frankly, we are the leader. Councilmember Bonds, you and your committee are leading this work across the country in a way that we should be proud of. And I'm not sure that this draft legislation really highlights all of the benefits and how progressive and how good the benefit administration is here in the District of Columbia.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting on the record the fact that the District of Columbia is one, probably the only one still, that provides benefits that are not paid into by the employee but are in fact the payments from the employer. So with that concept, I'm also hearing today, and you've heard some of it, that because it is offered to an employee, you know, leave is offered, that this particular leave could also be considered as a benefit to the employee. And so therefore, it was attached to their salary, and so they, the salary portion has, can be attributed as a payment into this fund, and so therefore it's been paid, and so they would like to extract it even though they've left their job.
You know, I had to unpack, I think this was one particular person's testimony, and I really had to unpack and try to figure out what was going on. I think that there is also an interplay of short-term disability, which the person that was, the public witness that was testifying was describing when she talked about a benefit package and maybe paying into it. It sounded like to me, without having the full set of details in front of me, that perhaps there may be a short-term disability benefit that her employer provides that she may pay into, which would have allowed her to use, if she was still employed, to have time away from work while on maternity leave. So I think that it was, that particular example is a bit complicated and requires some additional details and unpacking.
Yes, I appreciate that, and it's also, you know, from my perspective, it's the way an employee sees their salary and their benefits package. And we, I was part of the goal to bring about universal paid leave, and the goal was to address those that were in an employment situation and needed to have this leave. We were not, at that time, talking about individuals who severed their relationship for whatever the reason may be, and then moved into society, and then having the opportunity to come back and say, oh, I left my package, my baggage there at the old job, and I'd like to, you know, bring it with me.
And, you know, I'll say that, you know, none of us predicted that the current state of affairs would be what they are today. I have said this before, talking in general about workforce development in the labor market. It feels like we're having a bit of a Detroit moment. And so as the federal government policies have shifted, and we see our regional economy impacted, people are losing their jobs, which is terrible. I don't think anybody in this room wants anyone to lose their job and have the ability to collect paid family leave benefits upended. I feel terrible hearing the stories and the experiences of people, and so I think it's really important that I put that on the record as well. It's more than being sympathetic. It keeps me up at night, and since January 21st, it has kept me up at night of how our economy has been upended. I just want to work towards what I think could be a better solution, which is looking at all of the different benefit programs that are available in the district and seeing how we could shed light and make information available for those that are eligible for those benefit programs versus changing the paid family leave law.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am going to, I'll come back to you, Mr. Hall, but I want to acknowledge, my colleagues may have a few questions. Councilmember Louis George.
Thank you, thank you, because I have to run into a meeting, but I just want to have a few questions. Thank you, Director, Dr. Hughes, for being here. I guess one thing I want to reconcile here, I know is you stated in your testimony that the Universal Paid Leave Portability Amendment Act sort of would conflict with the original intent of the Universal Paid Leave Amendment Act. And I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, the Universal Paid Leave Amendment Act of 2016 allows for self-employed district residents to pay into and participate in the Universal Paid Leave Fund. And so I just, I don't, I just wonder, can you explain why is it that the portability bill would be in conflict with the original intent if universal paid leave, if the act covers situations in which district residents don't have an employer? You know what I'm saying? Like, if I'm self-employed, I don't have an employer, so I...
Because you are your employer.
Right.
When you're self-employed, you are your employer. You work for yourself. You show up on your payroll. You pay your taxes as an employee of the business that you are the CEO of.
Right.
What we're talking about here are employees of businesses that range in size that are not the sole proprietor of the business, and that's the difference here.
So how do the provisions of the Universal Paid Leave Amendment Act that mention an employer, that mention an employer function of a district residence is self-employed? So I guess, you already have the function within the agency, given that self-employed residents, self-employed residents already can pay into and benefit from said fund. So for me, that doesn't, that to me says we already have the system in place to know how to support residents who may not be sort of under traditional employers.
So at the spirit of this, the portability act, is this idea of taking your benefit with you when you are no longer connected to employment. I view self-employed as completely different, because whether you move to another building, whether you, you may decide to open up another LLC or become another sole proprietor, you are still the CEO or the head person of your business. And to me, it's apples, apples and oranges. Self-employed is self-employed with your own business as a sole proprietor. We're talking about individuals that fall under an organized structure and system in the private sector, where there are benefit programs established, there are policies and procedures, and the ability to grieve and go to OHR. It's two completely different types of operations, and so I don't see there being a connection.
I'm looking at it from a functional standpoint versus sort of, instead of, I guess, apple and oranges, like apple and apple pie, where this approach you use for self-employment could also be utilized for district residents accessing paid leave under this bill.
I don't, I'm not following. I don't see, are you suggesting maybe that D.C. residents should pay for and pay into their own benefits, like the self-employed? Is that where we're going here?
I'm not saying that they should do that. I'm just saying, from a processing standpoint, I don't think that it would change much. Sort of implementing this bill, in my view, wouldn't change much of what you have to do from a function standpoint within your agency, given that you already understand how to pay individuals who pay into their own, what their own pay leave fund as a self-employed person. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, I think I understand where you're, I think I understand where you're going.
And I guess I'm saying, couldn't this approach be utilized for district residents accessing paid leave under this bill?
I don't think so, and I don't think it's a precedent that we would want to start. We have so few self-employed individuals, and someone from my team can, get me the number, that's actually our smallest level of effort. I don't think that's a precedent that I would want to start operationally or systematically.
I want to, I guess, am I correct in noting that under the current PFL, D.C. residents don't receive leave, but sort of rather wage replacement?
Correct.
And I think, as Ms. Brown said in her testimony, sort of, an unemployed worker is experiencing a qualifying, experiencing a qualifying event, does need the wage replacement benefits the program offers.
Yes, and wage replacement could be synonymous with, like, leave benefits. So I don't disagree with Ms. Brown that people need time away from work when they have a qualifying event. I agree in principle there. I think where we differ is whether or not they are entitled to it if they are not attached to work. I agree with Ms. Brown that you should have leave benefits available or wage replacement available. I just don't think, I think we differ on the reasons why and whether or not you are attached to work.
Got it. And I understand completely that the employer pays into it, not the employee.
Yes.
I think from a funding, sort of, funding benefits standpoint, sort of, that means the district has the means to sort of open up this additional access. Essentially, it beyond has the means to do this, given what we know in numbers for paid family leave right now, but also it has the ability to do this, given the fact that there's a ton of people who pay in, that the employers pay into paid family leave, and they never utilize paid family leave. So opening this small access, this access to what I think is a sort of not large number of people would not make a dent in the paid family leave fund overall.
I don't share the same thoughts. If you recall, the tax rate decreased. So we implemented a new tax rate, it decreased. So that decreased the amount of revenue that's coming in to the fund, and...
And even with that, we're still in a healthy, paid family leave is still in a healthy space besides everybody trying to clamor for it, the district.
But we're not, though, because what the BSA did last year was reduce the tax rate and redirect revenue to other places in the government. So based on the...
I tried to do the year before, and everybody was like, no, and then everybody else said, oh, maybe that was a good idea, and did it afterwards.
So the fund balance in, and the trust fund is now accounted for based over the financial plan based on last year's BSA. So there is not the same revenue and fund balance, there's not the same revenue that's coming in with the decreased tax rate, and the fund balance is accounted for because the revenue's been redirected other places. So there is not the sort of money that the trust fund used to have, there's not the sort of fund balance that the trust fund used to have in previous years that it has now. So there's not an amount of money, I think, that's available to do this.
I guess I, based on what I've seen in numbers or what the council can do and has done, or the mayor can do and has done, the ability to open the gates of this without it having a dent in what we always have is leftover funding from paid family leave, which everyone has now seen as a pot of money to use for other things, but the intention of that money has always been for the people and the stories we're hearing today. And I think we're losing sight of the fact that these people who would be working, would be working if not for layoffs and who are unable to access UI because of the caregiving or medical leave status.
Can we unpack the UI part? Because I think we need to, I think there are some misnomers there, and I heard, I think it may have been Ms. Brown, testify about being able and available to work. There are some medical conditions where you are not able and available to work. If your doctor says you're not, then you can't.
Right.
But I think that there are some assumptions being made that you are not able and available to work if you do have a medical condition or if you are pregnant, and that's just not true. A lot of us have been pregnant and worked, and so we know, right?
Yes.
We all know. And so I want to eliminate this...
We have the benefit of having employer who understands that and respects that. I think, we can't say that for the other, I mean, we have D.C. government as our employer, thank you, DCHR, who respects, you know, respects that part of it, whereas I think other individuals may not sort of benefit from that same sort of being seen as able to work because of their status.
But I will say, and Councilmember Bonds, this may resonate with you, at least in the time when I had my child, these sort of benefits were not available, right? And the private sector paid family leave program is 12 weeks of maternity leave, 12 weeks of family leave, 12 weeks of save leave, and the mayor offered or introduced additional two weeks. So for prenatals, you get 14 weeks, which is greater than what D.C. government offers. So for for um, prenatals, you get fourteen weeks, which is greater than what DC government offers. And so I I just say all of this to say, yes, it is a, it's a a different time and um, we are grateful of the um, the the luxury and the benefits of leave that we we have right now. But we shouldn't just automatically assume that because one is pregnant or they may have to receive treatment, that they are not available and able for work. And if they are, they can seek unemployment insurance benefits.
I just think there are a lot of people who would be considered under that unable to work under a lot of conditions I mean, that I've seen. I mean, I, even when my husband was post-kidney surgery, like he was considered unable to work. I, because he had to stay, sit in bed and not move for a number of days. Um, I'm just imagining different scenarios. Last thing, because I have to roll, is I know you said there's different opportunities, but the things you've mentioned, like unemployment sort of TANF and SNAP, these are the same things that are also being cut right now too, like TANF, SNAP. I mean, last year I had to fight to give SNAP a raise. Didn't happen. Now the federal government is saying we have to give them a raise, given our threshold. But I I don't think we can depend on SNAP and TANF and unemployment insurance in this moment because they're also under attack and being cut. And the district, I don't know how we're gonna do it. I don't know that the district's gonna be able to get us even to the base threshold that we're at right now. Um, which, so I don't see that as a solution or source, and which is why this seems to be the better solution and source because it's something that at least employers pay into and we don't have to rely on the federal government um, in the ways we have to for TANF and SNAP.
Yeah, I just think it's important to note that when the tax rate changed, revenue decreased. And so there is not the amount of money in the trust fund today that it's been in years prior. And so unfortunately, I think everything is under attack. But let's come together and come up with a solution that I think could work for everyone is is my recommendation.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much for your um, your your time and effort on this bill. Um, Councilmember Pinto, do you wish to weigh in? I see you are still with us.
I do. Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to switch gears though to another bill, if that's all right.
Um, could we come back to you on that? Because I do feel I need to, I do want to go back to this particular bill and then we'll come right back to you.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, before we leave this bill.
Let me then just ask one or two quick questions on this bill. Um, so, uh, Director Morris Hughes, can you talk about the um, how the transfer of the benefits would work in practice if this bill is adopted? Um, to make sure that there's gonna easy access to those benefits, especially in a scenario where the employer may have different standards or different policies?
So we've, we've never even contemplated, so we haven't built out the um, the business processes, you know, outside of the system to figure out how this could work. Um, because we've never even contemplated and it hasn't ever really been a viable um, uh, action that uh, we think could have ever uh, taken. It it will take some time for us to figure out how the transfer or benefits become become portable. But at a high level, we would build out some sort of business process that would have to somehow track um, a wage to a claimant. And we would have to do some thinking, some some business process thinking on how we would do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and thank you, Charlene Bonds. I'll come back.
All right.
Come on to to help.
All right, I just wanted to um, put on the record, um, having access to some of my colleagues' old records. Um, the fact that as a result, um, this bill, the eligibility, when you ask the question, who is eligible and who pays? Employers will make the contribution um, of their payroll to the fund depending on the salaries of their workers. This means that if an employee, employer has a payroll of a a million dollars, that employer's annual contribution will be around six thousand two hundred dollars. Okay? Then it goes on to say, ideally, the program would have also covered district residents who work for the federal government or for an employer primarily outside of the district. But Congress does not allow the district to collect contributions to the fund from federal government or employees in other states. Same as we are not allowed to have the commuter tax, in other words. You work here and you take your money home. You do not pay anything to the District of Columbia. As a result, only individuals who work in the district for a private sector employer are covered. And it does stipulate that you would be working as opposed to um, have left your job. And I just wanted to put that on the record so it's clear what the intent was. And of course, as follow-up to the um, I guess, twenty sixteen when I was here, um, there were at least five additional bills. Paid Leave Compensation Act of twenty seventeen. Paid Leave Compensation for Workers Amendment Act of twenty seventeen. Large Employer Paid Leave Compensation Act of twenty seventeen. Universal Paid Leave Amendment Act of twenty seventeen, and then the Universal Paid Leave Pay Structure Amendment Act of twenty seventeen. So I just wanted our record to be clear and to contain all of the elements that we have attempted to discuss today. Um, I am hearing that there is um, some strong interest in a process that would address particularly um, individuals. Um, women, at least now that we know, women pregnancy um, is a big um, concern. And how do we address that? So that individuals will not um, who maybe have been severed from their job, no fault of their own. They did not decide that they were taking leave, but they were summarily removed from their position because of pregnancy. So it sounds like we're at a point where we might want to look at, how do we manage that part of society? Which is sort of glaring and before us. So I just wanted to add that. And so we'll move to to the next um, items on our agenda. Um, and we want to make sure we we do not want to leave um, Director Hall out of all of these discussions. So I guess we better go to the Fair Housing Opportunity for Public Employment, the HOPE Amendment Act of twenty twenty-five. Director Hall, you've talked a little bit in your um, presentation about how the, I guess, the issues that you see in implementing the bill, the HOPE bill. So if this legislation passes, what would be some of the first steps that you would be engaged in in order to implement the bill?
I think that um, a couple of things. Number one, we'd have to work with agencies to try to figure out how they will identify someone who would be responsible for carrying out these duties in their agency. Which would also mean that there would need to potentially be um, additional persons hired to staff in each of those agencies, as well as um, I mentioned, additional persons added to the team in DCHR. So there would have to be a staffing increase, as well as there would need to be training for the staffing persons that would uh, be responsible for this work. We would need to make sure that we train persons to understand not just the confidentiality of um, the work that they're taking on, but also uh, the necessity to ensure that we don't see an increase in discrimination. Um, I think a second thing would be working with um, agencies to actually create a process. I mean, we'd have to literally um, schedule times to meet with each of these persons in their agency in order to do um, the appropriate review and come to a determination, which at the moment, we don't have to do. So right now, it's in DCHR, it's housed there. There's a team uh, that's both trained and um, incredibly incredibly effective at what they do. So there's no, do we have time to schedule it? When when do we find time? Which then will will result in delays in the process um, and delays in filling uh, positions as well. I also think that um, there would need to be a change in the approach that the government takes as it relates to how we relay um, to returning citizens, that there is a closed circle of persons who are involved in the suitability process. Right now, without um, equivocation, we can say that there are only approximately six persons in the district government who would know that someone has a background check. This bill would expand that in a great way. And the question then becomes, who knows? And then unfortunately, who do they tell? Um, and so there's a um, incredible, I think, messaging point that we'd have to relay to uh, returning citizens that at the moment, we don't have to message. When I'm working with MORCA at the moment, um, one of the things that I stress to returning citizens and that the team stresses is that no one outside of DCHR is aware of your criminal background unless you tell them. That won't be the same message if this bill is implemented.
What about the um, hiring preference points? How do you think this will sit with community? Because already, if you're a resident of the district, you get ten points.
Yes, ma'am.
So this bill is proposing ten points, more points?
That's correct. I think that the community may um, struggle with it. Uh, in essence, what that would mean is you would get twenty points because you'd be a DC resident and then you get ten points uh, based on what this legislation outlines. Uh, it could be possible that this person is a veteran, which would mean they'd get an another set of points. Or if they were in the foster care um, program, they would get another set of points. And so I think that it would um, create some tension there, but I do believe that what we can say is right now, there isn't a returning citizen who's a DC resident who would not get those ten points because of their residency. And so they're already going to get um, a certain level of a leg up in the process that persons who are not DC residents would not perceive.
All right. Well, you mentioned foster care. How many points do you get for foster care?
I believe it's still ten?
Ten?
Five, ten, ten.
And for veteran?
Still the same.
All right, so I now have forty points. Tell me, I have forty points. Am I automatically, because of the high number of points that I have, at the top of the hiring roster?
No, because you still have to answer questions associated with the position. And so you're gonna receive points on those as well. But those points do give you a leg up, because if you answer um, the questions incredibly well, and then that's gonna give you a leg up in the process. Again, that doesn't guarantee you a job, but it does put you, as you're saying, at the top of the list of applicants.
So it, but it doesn't guarantee me having an interview for a job?
That's, if you're not, if you just have those points and you don't answer the questions well, you're correct. It would not guarantee you an interview for the job.
It would not. Okay. So in order to get an interview, how many points do I need?
So in order to to have an interview, you need a score of seventy, seventy?
Okay, seventy. All right, so I'm at forty. I've gotta find the other thirty. Okay.
Yes.
I think that's very important because we're talking about um, individuals, residents that um, have extreme difficulty with employment. Um, my colleague is gonna speak in a moment and talk to you about, you know, her intent and in this bill and how the the whole, well, when we talk about our population, um, returning citizens, five times more difficult for them than the regular, you know, applicant resident. So um, I think that that's very, very significant. And now that we know that it's seventy points, um, it really gives us some some additional thought about this. Um.
Yeah, I I would, I would definitely say that I commend Mayor Bowser and I commend uh, the district for its approach to ensuring that there's a priority placed on being a second chance city. And as the data shows, that yes, while returning citizens uh, may be challenged and have specific hurdles to gaining employment, that's not the narrative in district government. As you, you know, just knowing that we have ninety-eight percent of persons who are cleared, and then there's that two percent where half of them just didn't show up for the interview, so those persons equally could have been deemed suitable. I think that is something that um, the mayor and the district government um, as an employer, needs to be commended on. That also doesn't stop us from collaborating with others. And so as we're thinking about these persons in our community, you know, we welcome working with the council. We are working very strategically and intentionally with MORCA because we want to make sure that hurdles that we're aware of, that we're able to address, that we do exactly that. We address them. And I think we're seeing that bared out in the data that we provided.
So your your position is that currently um, ninety-eight percent of returning citizen applicants are successful.
That's correct.
With employment, without the extra points and what have you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna um, turn uh, quickly to my colleague, Councilmember Pinto. Sure she has questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Charlene Bonds, and and thank you to our government witnesses. I am hearing this kind of back and forth. I just want to um, share that part of the impetus for me introducing this bill was because I too thought that DC is a leader in this space and that our own local government uh, could really and was setting the example for a lot of hiring practices and and really one of the gaps that we needed to more strongly consider was in the private sector. But in speaking with people who had been through Project Empowerment, which is one of our own um, transition, transitional employment programs, who then still were unable to secure employment through our government, kind of it started me on this path to to looking at our own barriers. So Director Hall, can we just talk about the current practice? How does DCHR evaluate an applicant's criminal history to determine suitability for a particular role?
Sure. So um, the the suitability process would, um, first and foremost, I want to make sure that it's clear that the suitability process does not start until a contingent offer has been extended. And so um, the suitability process itself is not st- is not preventing persons from receiving an offer of employment. Because we don't inquire about criminal history or your criminal background until after a contingent offer has already been extended. So that means you've applied, you've gone through the interview process, you've been selected, and then you've been extended an offer of employment. And at that point, then we inquire about your criminal history. So there's the background check process that occurs then. I also would highlight that I think that there are varying factors as to why someone may not get to the point where they're extended an offer. Of course, I would um, definitely yield to uh, my colleague as it relates to the programs that are offered. But there are varying uh, factors that would prevent or could preclude someone from getting to the point where they've interviewed and then they're selected. So I want to make sure that it's clear the suitability process is not one of those factors. Because they would not go through that process until they've actually received a contingent offer. In that contingent offer, it will say to them that the only way they may be prevented from moving to the final stage of an offer is based on their background. However, um, we go through or go to great strides to ensure that we can find people suitable. So if there is an adverse uh, response on your background check, what's gonna occur is we're gonna reach out to you, we're gonna let you. what's going to occur is we're going to reach out to you, we're going to let you know what that is, we're going to give you an opportunity to come in and be interviewed. You can also submit something written if you're not able to come in for an in-person interview. And then we're going to determine, based on the proximity to the work or the position that you've been hired for, whether or not your background actually prevents you from having that job. If you're...
Director, and I don't want to cut you off, I just, that, that's the focus of what I'm trying to have you explain is, what are the ways that you make that evaluation if there is relevance to the job? What, what are some of those considerations?
Yeah. So, so it, it's looking at, for instance, if you've had a child abuse or a sexual assault offense, we would look at, is the job that you are applying for going to put you in close proximity to children? In which case, you would not be found suitable to work in that position. I do want to make sure that it's very clear that that would not prevent you from applying for another position in the government that would not put you in close proximity with children that you could be found suitable for. So there are avenues to ensuring that if you're found unsuitable for one position based on your criminal background, let's say if you committed fraud, you robbed a bank, we're, we're not going to find you suitable most likely for working with money or something like that. However, there are other positions within the government that we could find you suitable for.
And one of the things that we are seeking to do in this bill is create some more clarity so that applicants kind of are on the same page with what may be available to them and what some of the factors are. And so when an applicant is submitting a written supplement to kind of explain, what are some of the things that DCHR is looking out for in those types of written statements?
Can you expound a little bit upon what you mean by some of the things? You, you mean, is, are we looking to see if they've, they are proving to us that they've been rehabilitated? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, it, it kind of depends on, on your answer. I'm, I'm, the, it's my understanding that there is an opportunity for applicants to provide a written supplementation, kind of explaining their criminal history. And so I'm trying to understand of what types of things are you looking for in that written supplementation?
Got it. So there would be a couple of things. That there could be character references that they would provide. There could be certificates of completions of different programs that they've been involved in, checking to see that they're within good standing as it relates to the supervised release or probation. Those are all steps that would be included in that process.
Okay. And are those types of things that are communicated to applicants in advance? Like, this would be useful or is it kind of just depend what comes in?
So again, it wouldn't be communicated in the application process. However, I do get your point that as we're working with MORCA and as we work with council, I think that this is something that we can make sure that returning citizens are aware of so that it sort of eases any anxiety they may have as it relates to the application process. So as we continue to partner with MORCA, I'm, and you, and Councilmember Bonds and others, we're happy to sort of not just have this in writing, but get in front of persons and have these conversations so that they're aware of the process and what's available to them as it relates to appealing any adverse actions.
Thank you. Director Morris Hughes, what's the current placement rate for individuals who complete Project Empowerment?
I'm, I think, because we look at placement rate in two, in two different ways. But I think you want to know how many go on to employment after completion of the program. Is that what you, okay, thank you. So since FY '23, 76% of Project Empowerment participants go on to employment. Now, that varies. So we count at least one day of employment. Some are longer term, some are shorter term, some are seasonal. When we begin to look at sector and, and industry, that's where we begin to see some variation. But overwhelmingly, 76% of those that complete Project Empowerment since FY '23, and that's only taking into consideration 2.5 yet, 76% go on to employment, unsubsidized employment.
Okay. And what does DOES track in terms of performance effectiveness or job readiness through Project Empowerment?
I'm so glad you asked me that because I read the legislation and I was thinking, geez, these performance, how some of the terms in the legislation is operationalized, it's a little different than how we collect data. So we look at enrollment into the program, completion of the program, placed into unsubsidized, I'm sorry, placed into a work experience or occupational skill training. Then we look at whether or not they go on to unsubsidized employment. And from there, we look at second and fourth quarter after exit. Are they still employed the second? And then are they employed the fourth quarter after they exit the program?
So how does that relate to what you said before of even if you've worked for one day, that goes into that 76%?
I'm glad you asked me that too because we answered, I, I have that data point based on the language in the legislation and what we were asked in our pre-meetings about six months of unsubsidized employment. So we track data in a different way. And I'll ask my team if they can provide that data readily to me. But we looked at the six-month timeframe that we were asked about prior to the hearing, and that's how we calculated the 76%. But I, I would have to follow up with you on the second and fourth quarter after exit.
Because you see what I'm saying, right? Like, if, if we're counting 76% employment with only one day of employment, then how are we also saying that one of the metrics we consider is if you're employed in the third, fourth quarter?
Which, which is why we want to work with you on the legislation. So that way, it tracks to how all workforce data is measured. And so we don't look at six months, we look at second and fourth quarter after exit. And so I think that there is an opportunity for us to look at some of the language you have in the legislation and make sure it aligns to how we're already collecting data, which I think is probably a little bit more robust and detailed for us versus what's asked, which was just six months.
Yeah. No, that's totally fair. I'm, I'm just asking you though, right now, about your current practices. I'm not even asking you about the, the way that you would analyze it under this legislation. But I am out of time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Pinto. I wanted to continue with this line of discussion about this important bill and talk, get a little more clarity as it relates to how we would implement this legislation so that we would see an increase in the number of individuals who are returning citizens. I know we're saying 98%, but what is the 98% based on? Is it based on those individuals who apply? Or is it based on a particular program that, sort of like a set aside program? For instance, with the Department of Employment Services, where I know a number of individuals are referred to? Or with the Department of Parks and Recreation? What, what is, what does this 98% represent? Does it represent three people or does it represent 300 or 3,000? Because we have returning citizens to our community every month of the year, and we will continue, and we have been. No longer do we get 2,000 a month. We're probably down to a couple of hundred. I don't sit on the CJCC, which I think keeps that number. But I'm sure Councilmember Pinto knows. In other words, they're constantly coming back into society with the requirement of a place to live, new housing, and a job. So what does 98% really represent?
Yeah. So the 98% is representative of persons who have received a contingent offer. So they've gone through the application process, they've been interviewed, they've been selected for a position, and now we need to do the background check. These are persons who've had at least one encounter with law enforcement. And so they do have something in their criminal background check. And at the same time, they also have, from the district government, a contingent offer that's been extended to them. Also, to your, your last point, I would just want to make sure that we're clear that we are limited in the positions that we have for everybody, not just for returning citizens. But we don't have a plethora of job opportunities, especially if people, as we hope they will, stay with the government. That means we have even less vacancies. So I would also just throw that in as a factor to keep in mind that we don't have a, an array of vacancies sitting out there for anyone to apply to, including our returning citizens.
All right. And so the 98% of those that have received offers, what, what number does that represent?
What exact number? I can get that for you.
And over what period of time?
And over what period of time? Okay. So this is again for FY '24. The numbers I'm getting is 1,716 required further investigation. So about 2,000 candidates.
All right. So that means that this is the 98% that were received an offer from a department or agency?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do you also keep data that would indicate to us those that actually are placed in a job, actually go to work? First day at work, six months, a year? Do we keep any data that would indicate to us what those numbers might be?
So they would be included in our employment data? If you're asking if we parse out whether or not they're a returning citizen or, or have had an interaction with law enforcement? I don't believe that we are tracking that information specifically.
So you, you only track them to the application and process, basically? You do not track them to bona fide job, working in the government?
We track them as employees. If they're hired, if they're deemed suitable, then we would have them as an employee working for the government. But there would not be a notation on their personnel file that says, this person is a returning citizen or they've had something in their background.
All right. And I, I mean, I think that's part of the concern that, that, that we're hearing in community. You may be in the lineup, you've passed the first leg, and you may pass the second leg. But how do you know that you've passed the second leg, you'll be employed? And that's where your agency, sort of like, that's a cutoff of collecting data by your agency. You will have those persons who are employed to just be a part of the general employment FTEs that we read in a budget document, as an example.
That's right. We wouldn't classify someone as a returning citizen in the system. We wouldn't want to put any markers like that on someone. Keeping in mind that in the system, someone would know whether I, they would know my gender or my ethnicity unless I self-provide that information. And so that's not something that we, we're entering either. That's all self-reported data.
So if they were, if returning citizens were a protected class, then there would be a requirement to have data perhaps on this classification?
If you're, if you're saying that we would take the same track that gender and ethnicity is reported, it would be self-reported again. So it would not be something that we would be able to mandate. They have the option to provide that information.
I guess, I'm trying to figure out, how do we, society of the District of Columbia, do a better job of helping the returning citizens have jobs? Especially when our, our universe of the United States stipulates, when you're released, you must have employment, you must have housing. So how do we help them fulfill that requirement? And how do we, how do we know that we're, we're doing the job?
Well, I think that we, the data that we have is because we are doing that as a district government. These are persons who, again, have at least one encounter with law enforcement. They're going through our interview process. And then we're working with them to get them deemed eligible. And at the end of that process, since they're deemed suitable, they're actually getting a job. They're getting employed. And so I think that our data bears out that we are doing that as a district government. Now, how do we help in the private sector? I think that's a, a question probably for someone else. That's not my scope of work.
Okay.
But I can tell you, in the district government, we should be applauded for what we're doing.
All right. And so then the interpretation of the law is that when we say we're going to help an individual assimilate back into society, we do just that. And therefore, you're gone, you're, you're out there, you're in the, the mix of everything. Okay. That is one way to look at it.
I, I have some interesting data, I think, to share that answers Councilmember Pinto's questions and maybe would answer questions that you have. But I, I first think it's important to note that, and I reread the, the legislation this morning, that there is a specific reference to transitional employment, which is a term of art. And transitional employment is not exclusive to returning citizens.
Right.
And so Project Empowerment supports people who have multiple barriers to employment. I believe there's 11 or 12 barriers that we cite on our website. Justice in court involved is one of them, but you can have multiple stackable barriers. And so I just want to highlight that because the data that I have is for transitional employment. It isn't necessarily exclusive to someone who may have re-entered community. But when I look at the, I have FY '23 to present data on Project Empowerment participants. So I have 24 Project Empowerment participants that are working and, or connected in some sort of federal program. I have 147 that we have data that are, we're showing that work in DC government. I have, and that would have been from the FY '23 class. So people who enrolled in, in programs in FY '23 and FY '24. That number is not representative of every single returning citizen or Project Empowerment participant in government since the inception of the program, which is 25 or 26 years. I have, let me see. Actually, I have over 200 that are working in DC government. And I have over 2,000 that are working in the private sector. And so I, I, I think it points to a, a couple of things. One, those that have barriers to employment, including being justice-involved, and we know justice-involved isn't just an arrest or conviction, you know, it's much broader than that, are getting jobs and are getting employment. I think the, the devil's in the details when we start talking about retention and how long they're staying on, on the job. And I'm going to ask my team to provide some follow-up data based on how we collect it, which is second and fourth quarter after exit, to give you a snapshot in time of people, if our participants are retaining employment. I, I don't have, and it would require much more time than what we had for this hearing or to prepare for, the types of occupations, which I think is interesting to know. I know anecdotally, a lot of our Project Empowerment participants desire to work at DPW. I hear it all the time. DPW has a very supportive workforce. They actually have a, a training program. And it has been great for people who are re-entering community and DPW. program, and it has been great for people who are re-entering community, and DPW has been supportive. They've built a staff and a set of practices that are understanding, and it's what I call supportive employment. And I think from there, we can glean some best practices of what works well for our returning citizen population and Project Empowerment population into government. And even some of the private sector insights could tell us if there are other sorts of occupations that we haven't thought of in government that could be available. But I just want to underscore what Director Hall is saying, is that we do have some success with getting those that have barriers to employment in transitional employment programs hired into government.
Thank you for that. It would be great to have a way to look at this transitional employment, and who are they, and how are we servicing that population? Because more and more people fall into transitional employment pool. I believe, the bill says, as it relates to criminal history reports and relevance screens, it speaks to, who would be the program administrator that would develop these relevant screens? Is that your shop, Director Hall?
The bill seems to suggest that we would create new and additional criminal history reports. As stated, we do currently have a vendor that we get our criminal history information from, and it's a nationwide FBI crime information center.
You know, this bill speaks almost exclusively to returning citizens. And back to the point of, how do we count it? It makes it a little difficult, because clearly, we have more than returning citizens that are also in need of many of the same services that we're endeavoring to move forward for returning citizens. So I recognize that. So what happens when a, what are the options available to an applicant when their application is flagged or rejected for prior criminal history?
Yes. So there is currently an interview process in place, and whether it's general or enhanced suitability, if it's derogatory information, what happens is someone on our team will actually reach out and let the person know the source, the nature, as well as the impact of the derogatory information. From there, what happens is the individual has no less than 10 business days and no more than 21 calendar days to actually respond. So they'll be able to come in for an in-person interview, or if they are unable to attend an in-person interview, they can provide a written response. Our team then reviews that information, and we work through, again, looking at the proximity of their offense to their job responsibility, to see if it would be an issue, and if not, then they are deemed eligible. But there is an appeal option available to persons as well.
So of the applicants in FY '20, '23?
'23.
And '24? How many appealed? How many appeals do you count? And of the appeals, how many were you able to make an adjustment on? If we could get that within the next, you know, 10 days, we would appreciate it.
Got it.
I think that would add meat to our record here.
Okay. We will work on that.
Right. If you just hold on and want to make a check on whether or not we need to. Can we turn to the Summer Youth Employment Program for a minute? Director Hughes, how many Summer Youth Employment Program participants work for DC government And FY '24, as an example?
Let's see. In FY '24, we had 3,429 SYEP participants placed in a DC government agency.
3,429 of the
Yep.
Approximately 12,000?
Yes.
And what about FY '23? Do you have any information that's
Yep. So FY '23, 4,537 young people were placed in DC government agencies.
All right. So what do you, how do we look at this drop in DC placement, DC government placements from '23 to '24?
So a couple of things. I think, one, has to do with the age group of those that continue on in the SYEP program changing. So what I mean by that is, each year, our 16- to 24-year-olds, the number of those young people that participate tend to fluctuate. We believe it has something to do with minimum wage, because they can go outside of the program and earn minimum wage. And we see the younger age groups, including with the addition of the new nine-to-13-year-old program, pick up in terms of enrollment and interest.
All right. And so then, you're thinking that for FY '25, your numbers were?
So we haven't done FY '25, but what we're projecting, what we're, I think we'll probably be on track to FY '24 number, probably between 3,400, 3,300.
All right. In other words, the agencies of our government, our local government, are still saying yes and participating?
Everyone loves SYEP, so we always actually have more jobs than we do young people. But yes, we've had the same interest in agencies.
All right. I just want to make sure we're all doing our part.
And you always take your, well, you take participants, fellows, interns, so thank you for that.
And we're better for it, just so you know. So thank you very much for that.
I see one of our fellows who actually have, working today, I'm so impressed.
Yes.
She's in our new college fellowship program.
Yes, that's true.
She's running the boards over there.
So how many of these individuals from FY '23 have gone on to become a part of the district government?
So I don't have that data point, and it would take us a little bit more time to do some data mining and looking at, doing a wage bump, which I know the team has expressed interest in trying to do. But my guess is that it's probably fewer than a couple of hundred. And, you know, remember, we're talking about 14- to 24-year-olds. And so I think you're not going to see as many go on to full-time employment, because they're still engaged in school.
Yes. I was thinking primarily of those that, you know, would be, of course, you know, 18- to 24. I know that that category of summer participants tends to be college students.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if any of those individuals, or at least high school graduates, would be going into DC government.
I will have my team follow up with you to see if we can figure out how many that participated in '23 and '24 went on to full-time employment in DC government. I know we have access to that data, but we had not had an opportunity to complete the analysis.
Well, as you know, this bill is really focused on providing time and place with the summer program as a way of adding to their employment with the government, the local government. And we, the bill, of course, stipulates between 1980, the beginning of the program. And I think previous conversations with you have indicated that, where are we really with the data that would exist? That could be mined? I know your testimony said 2012 is a good start point, because you have electronic data. But are there earlier dates that we can look to?
We have some data that goes back as far as 2009. It would take some time to do some data mining. And you know, Councilmember Bonds, you and I always say 79 is the year for, because that's what we all know it as, is 79, but we'll go with 80. And I definitely don't have data on 79 or 80, so let me just put that on the record. But we do have some data in 2009, and it would require data mining.
I want to ask this question, but I don't, you have no way of answering this, in my opinion, at this time. But how many would become fully vested through this bill? Because we don't know what the universe is at this point.
I do not know what the universe is. We don't have a way of knowing that. That would require a look at some longitudinal data and analysis. We don't have that sort of access right now.
I think we have to start with where, what year we can mine the data, and then from the data, will inform us as to what we possibly can do. But let's say, let's say we were able to mine some data, and the data, so how might we put in place a verification process, particularly for ex-employees? What might that look like? Have you given thought to that?
I've given some baseline initial thought to that. I mean, I think that there'd have to be an initial inquiry to people. So, you know, it would start with an ask. The Department of Employment Services wouldn't have readily available access to that sort of data. I can tell you, and this only goes back to 2012, and this isn't necessarily unique individuals, but from 2012 to 2024, there've been over 58,000 placements, internships. So it could be someone who's continuing to repeat year after year, and that's just from 2012 to 2014. So imagine if we go all the way back to 80, what sort of number we could be, you know, talking about, or, you know, individual placements which would count for service. But I think it would start with an initial inquiry and ask of, you know, DC government population. But again, you know, I think that there, I think this requires some additional conversation about administratively, how that could be done, and how much that would cost.
Yes, the cost factor. Thinking about how an individual might access this program, let's say we have all the bells and whistles in place. Could we automatically be counted if we had proof that we worked in the Summer Employment Program? Or should we have to apply for it? Because my thinking is, as I mentioned earlier, some of the participants are no longer in DC to be a part of our local government. They may be part of other governments, the federal government or private sector. So should we open it to applicants, those that want to apply for this additional credit? Because they are working in DC?
I mean, I think this brings about lots of questions, more questions than what I have answers for. You know, would there be a benefit of someone who has not ever gone on to work in DC to get credible service in DC? Would the government want to invest that sort of level of effort for someone who has not ever worked in DC government and does not intend to? I don't know. I mean, I think you'd have to weigh the time and effort and the cost, and make a determination if it is worth the effort. And then, you know, because we're all, we all have a fiduciary responsibility of managing a finite set of government resources, you know, would you want to open up an application just based on someone providing proof? You know, I could see this go in lots of different directions. Someone brings a picture of themselves in SYEP, right? Like, I think that we have some more work to do here, and answer some really big questions before there could be a strategy in place on how implementation could go.
I appreciate that remark, because that seems to be where we are. I take seriously Director Hall's, you know, points about how do you implement a program like this within our government? And it would be incumbent upon our government to do that. And then, to what you are putting on the record, Director Hughes, the fact is, what's our universe? We don't, how do we, and how do we determine what that is? You know, what would be the points that we could cover? So I appreciate your comments today. Thank you very much. And I think, well, I thank you very much for giving attention to the legislation that is before us today. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And with that, I want to sincerely thank everyone who participated in today's hearing for their contributions. The testimonies will provide us with insight into the four bills that are before us. And with that said, if the public has any additional thoughts, or would like to submit written testimony regarding the information we received, the hearing record will close in 10 business days, Wednesday, May 28 at 5:30 p.m. And this concludes today's hearing. With that, the time is 1:25 p.m. on May 14, and the hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much.